Good morning and thank you for attending the June 11th Board of Supervisors meeting. We'll call this meeting to order at 9:00 a.m. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance held by Jaime Dela Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Acknowledgement of certificate of posting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five to zero. We'll go on to the presentations and recognitions. Supervisor Gilio? Can you please introduce the 2019 Saddle Horse Show and Rodeo to be held on June 28th, 29th, and 30th? Ladies?
Mr. Chair and the crowd, I've been a pleasure to see the presentation of the Saddle Horse Show Queens in two different occasions, as a matter of fact, yesterday at Rotary. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. French to give the presentation. They can do a great job without me, thank you.
Thank you so much. Good morning, everybody. My name is Kelsey French. I'm your 2018 Miss San Benito Rodeo Queen. I've had the honor of not only representing our rodeo, but also our community at different rodeo events, different outside rodeo events, as in Salinas or Gilroy, and community events here in Hollister. I was honored to be recognized at the city of Hollister last Monday as an outstanding citizen, and it really meant the world for me. So thank you Hollister for supporting me through this amazing journey. I am so honored to say that these two girls will be running for my title on Saturday. It's a little bittersweet for me because I'm handing down my title officially going to be a has-been, like just kind of out with the old and with the new. But, so our contest is June 15th, starting at 10:00 a.m. It is spring, open to the public. So I encourage you guys all to come out and come see these amazing girls compete. And further ado, I'm going to introduce Madeline Clarkson and Bonnie Mansmith.
Hi, guys. I'm Bonnie Mansmith. I just want to talk really quickly about the Saddle Horse Show Parade. So this year, it's the second year that it's back, and it's going to be held on June 22nd at 11:00 a.m. It's going to be a lot of fun. It's a really great family event. There's going to be tons of floats. I know that the high school has dance teams. I know that Baylor Cheer will be there. And it's just a really great event to come out and support. So I hope to see you all there. Thank you so much.
Hello, everyone. I'm Madeline Clarkson. I'm here to tell you a little bit about our rodeo. It is June 28th through the 30th. On Friday, it starts at 7:00 o'clock, and on Saturday and Sunday, it starts at 1:30. It is a lot of fun for the whole family. So please come out and join us for some rodeo fun. And, yeah.
Thank you, everybody, once again, for having us here. Any further information that you need, you can find on the San Benito County Horse Show and Rodeo website. There are prices on there for the rodeo. We do have a barbecue Saturday night after the rodeo. They have live auction. I know Mansmith's barbecue is doing the food. So it's going to be some real good food. Come out for that. And any other information you need, you can find me and ask me or go onto that website. But thank you so much, and we hope to see you all there at rodeo.
Thank you. Jaime, the Health and Human Services Agency?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Tracy? Or Maria? Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate you giving me this opportunity to read a little bit about the proclamation today for Elder Abuse Awareness Month, which is very important and dear to my heart. As I have senior citizens' parents, and one of them passed, one of mine passed away, but I do have other members of the community. In fact, I have a member that have been abused. And it's the time, this is the time when we actually need services like what we have today. Whereas, older adults deserve to be treated with respect and dignity to enable them to serve as leaders, mentors, volunteers, and vital participants, members of our communities. Whereas, in 2006, the International Network for the Prevention of Elder Abuse and the Support of the United Nations International Plan of Action proclaim a day to recognize the significance of elder abuse as a public health and human rights issue. And there's a couple other where, whereas, we're going to go down to the bottom. And therefore, San Benito County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim June 2019 as Elder Abuse Awareness Month in San Benito County, and encourage all of our communities to recognize and celebrate older adults and their ongoing contributions to the success and fidelity of our community. They are very important in our community, and they should play a role, and we should work with them because sometimes having them part of our family, it's more important than anything else. I, as a grandpa, five times over, it's important that we get involved in our grandkids' lives. And witness of the approval of this proclamation by the San Benito County Board of Supervisors on this 11th day of June 19, 2019, by the Chairman Mark Medina. Thank you. Maria, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Supervisor Dela Cruz. As shared, the elderly in our community are one of the most vulnerable populations that we are here to service. And in the proclamation, we also included some information to increase the awareness with regards to elder abuse. I think we, as a community, need to come together in order to prevent elder abuse. And we have to, we are the elderly's ears and eyes. We have to be mindful of what we could do to protect this population. I thank you very much for this proclamation, and thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to a public comment. This is the opportunity to address the board on items of interest not appearing on the agenda. No action may be taken unless provided by Government Section 54954.2. Do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do. First speaker is Jerry Tato.
I've got a couple of items that I'd like to pass out, if you would please. And then I'd like to go on to the, what I've got as an agenda. I think you've got one there, but you can pass those out. And then, there's some folders. You can start one on one side and the other on the other. What I'm here today, and after these beautiful young ladies were up here, I hate to bring some bad news to the San Benito County, but what I'm here is in regards to Salinas Grade Road. Salinas Grade Road is a very, has become a disgrace for our community. It, I don't know how many of you take it and have been on it. It goes between Salinas and San Juan Batista. And I've tried many times to get it upgraded to where we fix the potholes and one thing another. But this has become a detriment for our community. You've got the other side of it, where you've shown the beauty of it and one thing another, and then you have this, and it has become a disgrace. And we need to do something on it, and I hope the supervisors are taking a look at these. Oh, thank you, dear. And we've had a number of accidents on this road, including one for myself. And it is, we don't want a new overlay on it because it would become a racetrack, but we do want the potholes filled and some maintenance on it, and the guard rails repaired. And if we could get some of this done, I'd sure appreciate it, and my neighbors would appreciate it. We've made a couple of notations, and I've talked with Anthony. And I do, I thank you guys for considering what we've got there. If you just look at that, and I've got a tree in my front yard that came over, and it's in my pasture, and I'm trying to get that resolved with you folks. So these are some of the things that we've got. And we've become a derelict up there, and we would like a little time and effort put to our side. And that's about all I've got, and I want to thank you very kindly.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Crystal Lamato?
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. I have some good news. So following good news, not-so-good news, and now some really exciting news. I have several presentations I would like to make this morning on behalf of the San Benito County Office of Ed. So in April of this year, as you know, that we have launched the Footsteps to Brilliance Literacy, which has been a huge success. It's in about a year and a half, almost two years of implementation. And the organization that we've partnered with, Footsteps to Brilliance, recently attended our San Benito County Office of Ed Board Meeting. And the San Benito County Office of Ed was awarded the 2019 Leadership Award for our partnership with our districts and our community for innovation and the use of Footsteps to Brilliance. It was articulated during that presentation that the San Benito County Office of Ed was the first county office in the United States to be awarded this award for the work that we've done across the county. And like I say, we might be small, but we are mighty. And so what I'm doing is going out and rewarding all of our partners because this would not have happened without the support of our community. So I have several that are all within the county, so please bear with me. The first award goes to the San Benito County Board of Supervisors for your Partners in Excellence Award. So we would like to present you with the certificate that we actually received from Footsteps to Brilliance and our deep appreciation for your support with Footsteps to Brilliance. So if I can please present, Mark, I'll give that to you.
And then afterwards, I'd like to take a picture. If that's okay, but I have a few more to present. Okay?
I'd also like to specifically provide Anthony Patello with Partner in Excellence because he actually supported Footsteps to Brilliance as a business owner. So I thought this is a great place to reward you, so Anthony will be receiving.
Oh, great. Thank you very much.
I applaud you well.
That's a surprise.
A great freedom, yes.
I appreciate that.
Might as well in front of everybody.
Yeah, thanks.
And then we have a couple organizations within San Benito County, and one being the San Benito County Free Library have been strong partners. I know Nora could not be here this morning. Oh, Nora, yay, you came!
We wanted to recognize the library. They've been partners from the get-go. They attended trainings within our support, within the library, within the bookmobile. So Nora, thank you for being Partners in Excellence to support literacy across San Benito County. Hey, bear with me. I should have done separate cards I've got for each one. So San Benito County Probation is Joe here? Yes. San Benito County Probation has been a huge support of Footsteps to Brilliance and throughout that time within utilizing it with some of our youth. As articulated with the probation department, pretty difficult when you have a 15- or 16-year-old that does not know how to read. And we know the statistics within incarcerated adults. Many of them have third and fourth grade reading levels. And so they've been strong partners, obviously, to prevent our youth from being incarcerated. So thank you, San Benito County Probation. And finally, I've got seven seconds. I am good. The San Benito County Sheriff's Department, I don't see, yeah, I'm following it, I'm trying. They also have been strong partners. What they've done is we have Footsteps to Brilliance cards, and when they go out on a call, if they have a family or they see a family, perfect, that has children, the deputies actually engage with the families to promote literacy. And so I went out and trained all the deputies about a year ago. So the San Benito County Sheriff's Department needs to be recognized as well. So thank you. So again, thank you so much. Without the support of the community, we would not be able to engage the way we have and to receive a leadership award. It really isn't just the San Benito County Office of Ed, it's a community effort. So thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sure.
We do it every once in a while.
It's not often, right? We get to recognize people who are well-done. Yes. Thank you! Thank you. Next speaker is Richard Ferrera.
Good morning, Supervisor. Richard Ferrer, 1131 Union Heights Drive. We've been making great, and I know the roads are on the agenda and it's not the agenda, but I just want to inform the Board of Supervisor that your staff people, especially your contractor Greg, is, we've been making great progress. And I'd like to see the rest of the CSA portion of our CSA make the same kind of progress. And what I'm here to address is the weed abatement. In case anybody hasn't noticed, it's starting to warm up around here. And grass is getting dry. Our weed abatement, which has been pushed aside for the last couple of years, was supposed to have been addressed about four weeks ago. You had a contractor come in, and they did about, they addressed about 25% of the problem. But I'm here to tell you, what they did address was not to the standard of it. It would be, as an analogy, if you asked me to wash your car, and I just sprayed a little water on it with a hose and didn't put any soap or wash it out, is about the way they addressed the weed abatement. And I just wanted to bring it to your attention, so maybe you could follow it up, or staff could follow it up, and let's make the same progress that we're making with the roads. And I would really appreciate it because these weeds are up about five feet, and they're contiguous to households, and I'm pretty concerned about the fire danger. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Department head announcements, information only. We can start off with our CAO, Ray Espinosa.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, we do have some good news. I know this was brought up just a few minutes ago. I was actually going to update the board concerning potholes. Your board did approve moving forward with addressing potholes and infusing almost a million dollars into this. So in April, we actually heard this item. And soon, June 13th, at 2:00 p.m., we'll be receiving bids under the county contract, PWP 1903. So we'll see what those are, and then we'll move forward with addressing it. And that road is on that list. Just wanted to make sure that everyone knew about that. Additionally, there's an item, Item 37, on consent. I was just made aware that there's a date issue. It's not June 24th, it's actually July 22nd that PG&E will be doing an inspection and some maintenance. It's just a date correction on that particular item. I wanted to also give the board an update concerning some signage. There's been some issues with some of the roads, signage with speeding and other things, big trucks going down roads that they shouldn't be going down. We actually did put up some signs on John Smith concerning speeding. That was in the Supervisor Jim Gilio's District, District Number 4. Where also, RMA will be going out, RMA and slash Admin will be going out to Enzar and Cannon Road this week to address some other signage, as well as some other county road issues that we're going to be addressing. So I wanted to make sure the board is apprised of that, and there's been some action taken place with that. We, out of the GIS office, will be giving a presentation. It's a really good presentation. Renee's been working hard on mapping out the roads and where we're at from a GIS perspective. So we'll be presenting that, along with growth tied to it and housing tied to that as well. So it'll be a good presentation, just from the GIS department. The plan is to bring that in July. I also wanted to give an introduction. I'd like to ask Lauren Hall, please, if you can stand up. She is our new Management Analyst. She applied for the Management Analyst job, and she has been promoted from our Assistant Clerk of the Board. So she's doing dual duties right now. But she's definitely been instrumental in helping us out, especially in the interim with the RMA office being where they're at with staffing. She's been assisting us with CSAs. But we're really looking forward to her being full-time in our office and addressing our needs administratively. So you can say a few words if you like.
I just wanted to say thank you for this opportunity, and I'm looking forward to working with the board and with our community. So, thank you.
Through the chair, of course. I want to congratulate Ms. Hall. I think our clerk trains you too well. You're moving up the ladder.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Lauren. Are there any other department heads that would like? We have the Ad Commissioner, if you don't mind, coming up.
Good morning, Board. I just wanted to give you a brief update on the current status of the cannabis business permit application process. As you know, we opened the application period for 60 days that closed on May 31st. We received 10 applications. They all came in on the final three days of the permit period, so that was kind of interesting. We're still collecting a few items from them as far as live scans and background checks. We've had eight cultivation applications, one testing lab, and one micro-business manufacturing.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. We also have another one out of our County Council's office.
On Number 30, there was a slight change to the contract, and that was to correct the number of addenda and the date of addenda to that contract.
I'd like to invite up our interim Health and Human Services Director, Tracy Melton.
Good morning. We are here to advise you that our county has received a $1.87 million grant from the Continuum of Care Homeless Coalition. It is called the, let me advise you exactly what it's called, the Homeless Emergency Aid Program. We will be bringing the notice of approval for your approval. Mr. Ariola is going to present later a presentation and advise you more on the award. So we're excited for this and moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Just, I think, are you going to discuss the Ambag Award?
Go ahead.
Well, yeah, so I just wanted to mention to the board that our county did receive an award from the Air District. It was, the award was presented to our Supervisor, our Chair, Mark Medina, a few weeks ago. And that was for the work that we did. We actually received the largest award, I guess, and the biggest significant change within the tri-county area on reducing our carbon footprint with the work that we've been doing here. So just want to let the board know. With that, I believe that's all of our announcements. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Board announcements, information only. We can start off with Supervisor Jim Gilio.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll keep it brief. One of the most important meetings I had in the couple of weeks we've been off, in between meetings, is the CalCog meeting. I went up to Sacramento. And CalCog is the California Council of Governments. So we deal with, obviously, road issues and housing, believe it or not. Cog is a key factor in establishing our arena numbers for the county of San Benito. What we learned is, on the state's housing trailer bill that is expected to hopefully get adopted here soon, there's $6.485 million plus a $2 million incentive for the Central Coast region, which is San Luis Obispo, Santa Barbara, obviously San Benito, and all the Ambag counties, Monterey, Santa Cruz, et cetera. And that's for improving our arena, which is our regional housing needs allocation methodology. And we need to keep a really close eye on this, and our team's already on it. CAO Espinosa and Director Gilbert over at Cog are paying very close attention to this to make sure that we are allocated the funding that we need for San Benito County to make sure we get a great update for our arena. And also, they're talking about the using, being able to use this to implement zoning, as well as updating SEQA, et cetera. So this is a huge win for CalCog. They were expecting potentially, I want to say, the number they were looking for was about $500,000. So to come back with, just for our region, $6.485 million plus the $2 million incentive is a pretty big deal for us. And this will help us to establish effectively our arena numbers and perhaps maybe even use some money to implement zoning, which we desperately need to get done. So thank you, Mr. Chair, for that. And then thank you, CAO Espinosa, for jumping on that right away. This was about a week and a half ago, and we're already on it. So that's great news. The, a lot of things going on around the community, very active. So if you want to get involved in the community, now's a great time. We have a lot going on. In the past few weeks, I've had a lot of CSA meetings. As a matter of fact, yesterday, I wanted to thank our county staff. We had a large meeting to deal with some vineyard estates CSA issues, and I think we were able to get them some pretty solid answers and hopefully a path forward for them there. We have CSA agenda items on today that hopefully we will discuss and deal with and be able to bring some closure to those issues. And then yesterday, I had a, wanted to thank staff for meeting with me to educate me more on healthcare and reimbursement in our county and what that looks like for the future. And thank you, Tracy, for doing that. I know you got stuck in traffic, but thank you for being on the phone. I appreciate that. I appreciate that. And Alan, if you're here, I didn't see you here, but thank you. Thank you, Alan. All right, guys. Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Hernandez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I've had, first off, many budget meetings. I know we're going to be talking about that. It's going to be some fun stuff. We're going to, but yeah, along those lines, you know, we, we were basically having to talk, talk about a growth again as part of the, you know, with developments and stuff. So in relationship to basically my last meeting that I had with the intergovernmental meeting, I know we talked about growth and opportunities to work together on a growth management plan. Ultimately, the goal was for, for all, all the, these, all these agencies, basically the school districts, you know, the, the county office of ed and us and the city and the county, coming up with the game plan where we're on the same page. You know, it seems to be there's a little bit of a disconnect and it's not intentional. It wouldn't, I'm, I'm not assuming that, but it's, at the, at the end of the day, there's, there's a world that they live in that they want to understand our world and vice versa, so we can have a better understanding of how to work together. So one of the things that we talked about was getting a info on a G I S overlay with the city and county developments. I think that's a really good idea, so that way we can kind of, again, have a roadmap. The, the school district has been working hard to address growth or the, basically the, the implications of growth. And part of that was, you know, they, like they're trying to work on staggering their class times. They're trying to come up with different game plans to, to try to filter their, their kids to and from school. So even, even drop off locations and stuff. With that said, you know, at the end of the meeting, we talked about basically going out to visit C S U M B. Well, we, we just had a visit with C S U M B, but we had a, the intent of, of the governmental was to basically try to have another sit-down, but this time with the president because of the outcomes of, of the, the C S U M B visit. So the, the visit was really exciting. We had Ray with us and, and a big part of the conversation was on how to, how to bring an extension here to San Benito County. They have an eighty-five-hundred student population and, and they, their biggest mention was they're limited on their resources, so they really need to come up with opportunities. They actually just bought the Steinbeck Center, which is, you know, I was actually kind of surprised because I, I played part in the, the startup challenge. They call it the Monterey Bay Startup Challenge. It's, it's likened to the, the Shark Tank, so they have their own Otter Tank, which they go through this whole process of basically getting startups to, to vet their idea, present it, ultimately get it filtered through. If you make it past the first stage, you get a, you get a mentor. So it's really exciting because ultimately it gets from idea to, to market. And the idea is to get people basically, obviously, to be not only innovative, but ultimately be connected to their, their, the assets, to their local economy. So they, they play a big part of, of being a big help. And the experience that I had was, was pretty amazing. So, so part of their growing focus, for obvious reasons, is, is entrepreneurialism and, and they call it the annual cycle of innovation. They, they have a startup hackathon, startup weekend, and then the Monterey Startup Challenge, which is what I had just mentioned. So one of the things they talked about is having virtual incubators, or they call them launchpads. And then by that, meaning they're trying to address the needs for off, you know, have off-campus sites, which, you know, it got really exciting at the end of the conversation and, and that's why they, they're willing to try to get that president to talk to us, to our community, so that we can come up with some kind of a game plan. And the whole idea, and we, you know, was to come up with something that's going to be a huge interest to our community, including the library. So, so the library folks were there and, you know, we, we had a good representation of people. And then I was just invited by Dr., or, I'm sorry, he's a teacher at the school, Mr. Sherrig, and he, he has his own vocational type class. It's actually, they were, they're, I think it's advertising and marketing, but they actually brought me in to present as an entrepreneur. So they, they, they had me present to, to the kids and ultimately explain to them, you know, what my idea was, how it started and how our business basically grew. So it was a really exciting thing and I, I, I love that the high school is getting so involved with trying to ultimately have even vocational type focuses like that. Really big assets, I think, to our community, so I appreciate the high school for listening to their community and, and getting that C E T, C T E building established. So, and then on to the not-so-fun stuff, we, you know, we, we had, I've had a little bit of an issue with, with Dunn Park and the homelessness, but with all, with all do, you know, ultimately with all, a lot of respect, I really do appreciate C A O Espinoza getting really directly involved and involving Tracy and just having, I mean, they've been working on this already, but to me, that's kind of a big sign of the issue of our community when you look at that kind of, that park and, and ultimately the, the effects that it has on our community. And to a certain extent, there's, there hasn't been enough of a focus. But again, I know that the county's been working on it. I know we have the whole person care. I visited with, with Supervisor Dela Cruz, the whole person care with Tracy and Enrique, and they, they took us through it. So we're working on a game plan to address it and, and I appreciate that even the city wants to get involved. We had a sit-down with Carol Lenore and even Councilman Resendez. And so it was a really good conversation. Ultimately, we're trying to come up with a solution so we don't allow this homelessness issue to grow and, and to provide services, because that's what the whole person care is about, to make sure that we, we address the issue and not walk away from it. So thank you for your time, Mr. Chair. I know it was a little lengthy.
Isaac Dela Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to give my report. I attended the Monterey Community Power Board Directors Meeting last, last Wednesday and it seems that the discussion is now to increase the number of members. A couple of counties and cities are interested in joining the organization, which means their board, there'll be more members at the table, we'll be giving out more seats. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but it definitely will dilute the, the power of the board. That's a discussion that, in fact, Mr. Freeman is out in the audience, him and I attended the meeting. We just, we just asked questions, you know, what's the direction of, of the Monterey Bay's power joint directors? Do they want to continue and grow to the point where they almost become the next P G N E? My understanding was there to provide alternative energy, create, reduce rates for our public and, and I hope that that's, that is still their mission statement. Mrs. Chair, I also had a couple of meetings with both Bray and Stewart. Thank you very much for your time and educating me on, on this year's budget. It's going to be very interesting, challenging and rewarding once the board agrees on a simple concept of a budget. I'm just saying that right now, we might have a difference of opinion after we approve budget, but I think us five can approve a budget that the staff can be happy by the time the budget process comes around. I also attended the, actually, this is kind of funny because I was just watching a movie Saturday night called Little Rascals. And, and the next day on Sunday, Supervisor Gillio was out there on Fifth Street and they had the fifth anniversary of the endurance race car that started downtown and then they drive through the county and I think Monterey County too, I could be wrong, and they drive down there and then they meet at Tiffany, Tiffany Four Parking Lot at two o'clock. But the funny part was that when I was watching Little Rascals on Sunday night, it was the same cars that these gentlemen and ladies were using and I was just excited. It was like, I was a kid out there and I really appreciate, what's his name, Richard, Richard Hershey and his entire group for organizing it and inviting me. Thank you, appreciate it. I also like to give thanks to Tracy for allowing Peter Hernandez and myself, give us a walkthrough of the latest and greatest of our facility, homeless facility and other opportunity, options that we could have. I think we, we have some good members in our staff and I want to recognize those members, Tracy, Stewart, Ray and entire staff. Thank you very much. I attended the intergovernment committee as an official, I'm not a member of it, but I just wanted to step in, just see the progress and it was a good conversation. I, I really am proud of our both city council members and board supervisors, because now we're beginning to talk about how do we include the school in the process? And that should have happened a long time and we all take blame to it, but I think now it's time for us to work together. If we're going to build in our community, we need to make sure we do it right and schools need to play a big role in this picture. And the last thing, Mr. Chair, I had a meeting with the members of my constituent in my district and in reference to Benavista Road, and the issues that, that their concerns was that they were about to be an extension, North Street Extension, it's going to be a lot of traffic because that's going to go through Benavista Road. Then there's also going to be some new development that's going to generate about three hundred homes around there. They just have a concern, members of that community have a concern of that, don't forget us. It's going to be an increased, it's going to be increased traffic, potholes are bad, the street's getting bad, it's a city-county road. And the final words I say to me, and I'll repeat this to my fellow supervisors, don't forget about us. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Patel.
Well, thank you. Most of everything I had has been covered pretty much. I do want to thank staff for having a, I had a C S A meeting last week and it was a pretty well-attended, full staff meeting with members of the C S A thirty-five and some of the issues hopefully are going to be addressed. And, and I, I think our execution in the field has to be better. You know, we have a lot of these meetings and, and all the intentions are there for, with our administrative staff and, and managers and supervisors, but we got to execute better in the field and, and we're getting there. And, and I just want to make sure the public understands that we're looking for, you know, non-traditional ways of getting some of this work done and, you know, going, as the C A O mentioned, we, we're going out for a contract with, to fill potholes, do some of this road work. And that's just how we're getting things done. This year was a very wet year, a late year. We're behind on the mowing. There's quite a bit of work out there, but we'll, we'll catch up. And, and it's not from lack of effort of our, our people not working, because I see them out there. And I want to make sure I thank them too. So it's mostly for me, it's been dealing with constituent issues and we're working our way through them. Thank you.
Thank you. I think everyone covered everything that I had to say also, so we'll move on to consent agenda. Anybody from the board wish to pull any items? I personally like to pull number thirty-nine for discussion.
Mr. Chair, number twenty-eight.
So I see pulling twenty-eight and thirty-nine and there was a change in number thirty-seven, changing June to July twenty-second.
And thirty.
And thirty.
Yes, it was just correcting the number of addenda and the date of the addenda.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if you'll entertain a motion, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the amendments to item number thirty-seven, updating the date to July twenty-sixth.
July twenty-second.
July twenty, say the.
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
Two-two.
Two-two.
July twenty-second and also the number of addendum to item number thirty.
Is there a second?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, I mean to be, basically, I, I had a couple that I was looking for, but sure enough, yeah, it's just short questions, six, nine, and twenty-eight.
Six and nine?
Yeah.
Six, nine, and twenty, twenty-eight?
Yeah.
Twenty-eight's already pulled.
Oh, twenty-eight, sorry. So six and nine.
Okay, you want to restate your motion, Mr. Gillio?
Yeah, but my motion, it, it stands to approve the consent agenda with the, with the items that have not been pulled, amending item number twenty-seven to include the date of.
It was thirty-seven and it was to change the date to July twenty, twenty-second.
Get back there, there we go. Item number thirty-seven to July twenty-second and item number thirty to amend the amount of addendum.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, five, zero. We'll go to number six, the county administrative office, adopt resolution to allocate state of California off-highway vehicle license fee to repair Sienna Ga Road.
I just, just a quick.
Yeah, I'd like to go ahead and invite Stuart. Stuart Petra, he's our budget officer. He's actually worked on this quite a bit, so he might be able to talk to it a little more.
It was quite a bit, actually.
Yeah, yeah, a lot, a lot of research going back and.
I just, it's actually a pretty simple question. I just wanted to know where the fees are going to right now and.
So this item had already been brought to the board a few months back, I believe. Can't remember the exact date, but it, it had been going to the sheriff's office just as a kind of contribution to that office. We have not decreased the sheriff's budget in any way, but this funding had been rerouted to the Sienna Ga Road to directly, directly for those impacts to that road, because that's the main roadway to, to Hollister Hills.
So how much of that road will be fixed with those funds?
Well, there is, I believe there was about a hundred thousand in there. There's going to be additional funding going into there ongoing, but it's only about a hundred thousand a year. So in terms of how much can we do with that one hundred thousand, it might be more of a, we need to build it, the reserve up to actually focus some source, funding sources to that road directly.
And what's the, the P C I rating of that road?
I'm not sure. We can bring that back to the board, though.
No, it's fine. I mean, I, I, I've driven it, so I know there's issues there and that's fine. I, I don't have an issue with, with the item, I just had those questions.
Yeah, this item is just solidifying in a resolution the boards, kind of what the board had already decided at the previous meeting, which was to put the funding towards that road maintenance for those impacts there.
Sure, thank you.
Mr. Chair, Stuart, it's, it's a hundred and fifty thousand one-time deposit into the account, correct?
No, it's, it's. That wasn't the, oh, sorry, go ahead. The resolution is for ongoing.
How much is ongoing?
So it's the total amount collected. It's about a hundred thousand a year.
About a hundred thousand. And typically, that will be going to the sheriff's department.
Uh, that's correct.
And are we backfilling through general fund, the, that, those dollars?
That's correct.
So we, in a way, in a sense, we're moving general fund money to this.
That's correct.
Mr. Chair, if I may. So we, we brought this a couple of months ago and what we did is we did the, we went back and we did a bunch of research and we found out that there was a, a misunderstanding essentially with the allocation of about, you guys may remember this, about six thousand dollars a month that was being allocated. And, and that was, not to get into the whole history, because we, we did back then, but that was a, an agreement that the state had when, when the new park was going to open. And then once the new park opened, the, right around two thousand and six, there was actually a change in the way that V L F was accounted for and adopted, and it actually benefited our county. So what happened in the past was, it was how many off-road units were registered in your county? So it benefited all the, the bigger counties that have a lot of A T Vs and off-road vehicles. And our county doesn't have a lot registered, even though we get all the impacts from those counties. So at the time, there was a very forward-thinking superintendent of state parks that went ahead and got a law passed to change the allocation, the way it works. And what they did is they basically looked at how much usage the parks get and they reallocated the funds towards that. So during that period of time from oh-six to when you guys took this on in twenty fifteen, I think there was just a, it was just a, because there was so much going on, there was a misunderstanding of, of the amount of money, of where it's coming and where it's happening. And then also, you guys had the financial crisis, obviously, in oh-seven, eight, nine, ten, so we had to really shrink everything back. And the, to answer Supervisor Hernandez's question, one of the important things that we did about two months ago is using S B one funds, this, this money here, as well as some prior S B one funds that were going to be for another part of Sienna Ga Road, we were able to cobble together about eight hundred and, it's almost nine hundred thousand dollars to do about, I'm looking at great, because I, I don't know if we've determined exactly how much we can do, because we're still studying it, but about a mile or a mile and a half, which is significant. And that's a major overlay to actually get that road really looking a lot better. And then the thought would be for the hundred thousand dollars to continue to go up the hill to Sienna Ga Road, so we can get a passable road for all the economic development and the businesses that we have up in that area. So that, this, this was something that we agreed upon. Our thought was to bring it back to make sure that it's codified, so that when we're all gone, somebody doesn't have to go back and do weeks' worth of research to figure out what was supposed to happen with this money. Thank you for your time, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, yeah, I, I want to occur with, with Supervisor Gillio. I mean, ultimately, I see a big value to that, that road. It, it does get a lot of impacts. I get, it's funny, because San Benito connects, you know, indirectly to Southside, I mean, to Sienna Ga and that whole area, so you, I get a lot of R Vs driving in front of my place, so I, I know that that road's pretty impacted. And to a certain extent, the value should be focused also around protecting the, the tourism benefit that we get from those visitors, so it's, it's one piece to the puzzle. So I, I agree. I, I just had questions, that's all. Thanks.
Any public comment? Bring it back to the board. Bring it back to the board, what's the wish of the board?
Mister Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the item as stated, item number six.
Second.
You got a second, that was? Vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five, zero? That takes us to number nine, number nine deals with uh adopt a resolution of the Board of Supervisors amending current personnel rules relating to salary upon appointment and retirement benefits for certain temporary employees who have been prior CalPERS members.
Good morning, Chair.
Morning, sir.
Members of your board, so this item before you was brought during questioning on four-two upon your guys' recommendations, we're making the changes of you, as you guys wished on four-two. The two things that we're changing to our personnel rules is the removing of having CalPERS members um that are bringing in an extra help, having board approval before hiring them. So this is for folks who have established prior CalPERS membership with another entity and are being hired as extra help here. Currently, we need to come to, before your board, to get approval to hire these extra help folks, we're removing that. Um the county has no say on either paying these previous CalPERS memberships, it's just to expedite things and make things easier, especially for, in the probation office, when they wanna hire juvenile hall individuals who have prior CalPERS membership. The other one is to give more authority to the CAO's office um to hire at a higher salary step. Currently, it's at C, we're moving that to S, to D and E, and the two top steps still being um under control of your board.
Sir.
Mister Chair, so I I just wanted this pulled because I, and I um I support it ultimately because I support our our CAO.
Mm-hmm.
Um all things considered, it's it's based off of the dialogue and conversations and sentiment of the board that ultimately wants to encourage efficiency for you guys, right, trying not to minimize redundancy and ultimately not lose folks, 'cause I know I've had conversations with with the sheriff and even um our chief of probation, that that that's part of the issue, is ultimately you, there's a process and because as things come back to us, it, we might lose folks that are interested in um because we were, it takes too long, so. So I'm not trying to 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 oppose this, you know, in my, you know, in my perfect world, I'm, I just wanna, to a certain extent, if it's possible to create some kind of a protection, that maybe we bring back this policy, should our CAO retire or something happens where he's gone, I mean, I I just wanna protect the will of the board ultimately at that point. 'Cause under excellent leadership, I think this is a good opportunity for us to to be more efficient. Um but we don't know, when we get a new CAO, how things might change and and to a certain extent, I think that should be considered and how do we move forward? So if it's possible, um if there's any change in leadership, if maybe that, at least at that point, it gives the board to that board, whoever it is, to consider whether that's a good idea or maybe change that policy at that, at that moment. So that's my question.
To have like a sunset provision per se?
Something, something to just bring it back so we can talk about it again, or or the the that current board to talk about it and say, look, this is why they did it. Maybe let's, let's think about this again, do we wanna do this or do we wanna change it a bit?
Um this actually stemmed out from our strategic planning. Um when I was brought on board, um what I did, I reviewed with our CAO and we came up with ideas of how to streamline our process. Um comparing to other counties, this is, e- even at this new level, we're still below what other counties allow. Um at, for instance, Anchors County, the CAO has approval all the way to step seven, as you say, um G here. Um so when the personnel rules were first developed, um it was C step, but under those rules, there's only five steps, now we have seven. So we just moved the dial with the new step, um the changing of from five to seven.
Well, and and I agree, so I'm not opposing it at all, I just, in my mind, I, history has a way of reminding us of why we did things and why we should at least consider why we did things and then how it applies to today. So all I'm saying is, I just would like an opportunity, if it's possible, to bring it back to the board at the moment that there's a change in leadership, so we can
Your board can do that at any time.
Yeah, well, hopefully that
It would be a, just to, uh, complete transparency, it would be a mean for also, if your board would wish to do that in the future.
Mister Chair, um I think I understand what Supervisor Hernandez is saying, he's making, uh, Mister Chair, he's making the assumption, Edgar, that uh you'll have a whole new board members here and then Ray, I mean, Ray's the subject today, so Ray, Ray, Ray leaves, you get a new CEO and and there's issues between the new board and the new CEO and the board might say, you know what, we we don't want you to have that that G or F staff at the moment, we wanna evaluate you and 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 see how it goes. There's no mechanism for that, because as soon as a new CEO, as soon as the Ray leaves or the, you get a new board members, that triggers no longer there, or the reminder will be no longer there.
You would, even at this new policy rule, you still control F and G?
You will control it, but
The board, your board.
Yes, but the problem is when
We don't have a reminder.
We won't have a reminder in place.
We don't have a ping that says, hey, by the way, you did this before. So the new board would not think to consider it, 'cause it would not have, it's, you know, they don't go backwards in time.
Mister Chair, if I may, Ed, so my recommendation would be, in the light of that, we can, we can do a a term, like a Board of Supervisors four-year term, we can just do every, whether I'm here or not, we can evaluate our policy at that point and just do it every four years. I think, and bring it back to the board retreat and just go down the list, I mean, that's where this actually stemmed from, was from our board retreat, as as um our um Deputy CAO had mentioned, we kinda talked about efficiencies and we talked about possibly addressing some of these things, um
Well, yeah, and I, and I, Mister Chair, and I I would completely support that, I wouldn't want it to change. The reality is, is I do believe that there would be an efficiency process because of this. All I'm saying is, is we should at least get back to revisiting why we did it and that way, we make sure that everybody's still on that same page. My biggest worry is there's such a change in leadership that, you know, we, our focus has been really good about protecting reserves and doing things as a, ultimately, we're we're very uh fiscally conservative, protecting our funds. And then, you know, if you have new leadership, granted, you're supposed to trust that leadership, but it doesn't change the reality that, you know, not everybody's perfect, bad decisions could be made and we wanna protect ourselves against the implications of any, any, any bad decisions.
It'll also help too with checks and balances, see, see how this new policy has affected, whether it's a a pro or or against, but that's just a, a recommendation, we can add to that if you want.
Is there any uh public comment? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board, uh what's the wish of the board?
Mister Chair, make a motion that we ex- uh adopt resolution of the Board of Supervisors amending current personnel rules relating to salary upon appointments and retirement benefits, certain temporary employees who have been CalPERS members and review this item every four years through the retreat process.
Um with all due respect, is it every four years or is it every time a CAO is to change hands? Because if a CEO, if a, if a CAO is to change, I mean, what you guys are debating is, if a CAO was to leave tomorrow, well, we're not gonna review it for four years.
You're right.
So, I mean, let's, if we're gonna do it right, let's do it right.
Yeah, yeah.
So what's your recommendation, Mister Chair, upon, upon changing?
My recommendation isn't, you don't want my recommendation, 'cause I just wanna keep it as it is, as as we have it now, so you guys would have to make the recommendation.
Mister Chair, if I may, the only reason why I'm saying that is, is that if there, um, you know, when that happens, who's gonna remember? And and having a set time just allows us to to evaluate it, whether I'm here or the, someone else comes in. So that's kinda the only reason why I was saying, just kinda keep it on a cyclical period of time.
You know, Mister Chairman, I have a question for um my colleagues that are making the the suggestion, is what triggers
going back to the board, making the decision to do uh appoint that D and E that we currently have um rather than the the CAO, is it economics, is it we're not happy with the people that were hiring in these management positions, because that's what it amounts to, it's, we're not talking about rank and file uh hires, we're, we're talking about department heads. And um we're, we're struggling to fill these positions and I, you could bring back policy, any policy, anytime. And that's the way I'm looking at it, I, when, when it becomes a problem, that the future board and a future administration could bring it back and 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 that's why it's on here today, it's that, it's a problem right now. And um, you know, to review again, we have so much business before this board, this packet is full. And we're worried about this policy when it's not a problem, uh I I have a problem with that. So
Well, now that Anthony opened up a can of worms, um, you know, I I feel the same, we spoke about this at the retreat. And this is the first time, I don't know how long it's been, Jaime, that we we reviewed all the policies and procedures. It's been about, what, eight years probably? So, you know, that was brought on by myself and and the board here. So we saw that we needed to look at all the policies and procedures and that's the whole idea of the board, is to look at things periodically. And that's why we do delegate our authority to Ray and to all the managers sitting out there. So I think it's important that that we look at this and say, well, as new board comes on, they should have the, you know, the intelligence and the um, the passion to look at things that you're talking about and bring them to the board when uh, when things need, need to be changed, and that's the whole idea.
Yeah, Mister Chair, with all due respect to Supervisor Pitalos, I I totally support what, what he's saying, in fact, that's, we should really get down to the real business, unfortunately. This is where, this, these little small things get us into, get us into big trouble down the road. By doing it right, spending a couple of minutes right, it allows us to make sure we don't revisit these and say, God, we should've said something, we should've done something back then. It's, the question is not, does, that, the question is not that we need staff, we need good quality staff or not, the question is, how do we retain our employees and we're giving Ray the flexibility to make sure we retain those employees? What Supervisor Hernandez says, let's just put some type of trigger in there that in, I don't know, four years, whatever, and Chairman Manita's perfectly correct on that, something that's just a little reminder of whoever's sitting here on the board. And that's very simple and it's a compromise and it won't hurt anyone and Ray will still have the authority and the tools to hire and and provide steps, increases to to, whenever he feels necessary to make sure the business in the, of the organization moves forward.
Mister Chair?
I I was prepared to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
In the spirit of compromise.
Yes, sir.
Uh in the spirit of compromise, can I uh suggest that we approve this item as stated with the addition of uh every um uh January, we come back and we just take a look at this and um let's do that for the next two consecutive calendar years. And if it doesn't seem like it's a problem, then we can um just go back to leaving it alone. So every January, we'll bring it back for the next two years, take a look at it, and then we can move on.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm, I'm voting for it, I I'm fine, but I just think it's a waste of time, but
Five, zero, five, zero? Okay, number twenty-eight, um, we're looking at authorize a leasing of three vehicles through the County Enterprise Fleet Management Master Equity Leasing Agreement for years two thousand eighteen, nineteen, for an annual amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars, yes, sir?
Yes, um, well, we're seeking to uh replace three vehicles that uh we've had in in uh, in our fleet uh since nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand two and two thousand five as part of uh San Manito County-wide contract, which is approved in two thousand fifteen with Enterprise, basically uh they would be doing true fleet management of the three vehicles that we would bring into the department. And uh it would be, I think, very advantageous, because all the maintenance is included on this, uh, uh, the lease is low, our, the way our um vehicles have worked is, we have pretty low mileage for for vehicles. And one of the things that we don't do is we let a vehicle sit and sit until it's, you know, since nineteen, or uh, yeah, nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand and two, and it just kinda sits there and it ends up not being used. Fleet management would allow us to, through uh Enterprise, that they can look at it, tell us when, at, you know, it's worth putting money into this vehicle or selling it on the market at the right time to get the most money back so that we can utilize it in the department. And uh it it, I think it's the way we need to go right now. We are being able to purchase, or not purchase, but uh lease three vehicles for twenty thousand dollars. If you look at the vehicles included, it would be, you know, quite a bit more to purchase them outright and and take on all the responsibilities of the maintenance and everything that come along with it, not to mention the fact, whenever you have a mechanical issue. Now, uh, nobody in our department is particularly talented when it comes along to being mechanically inclined. So we're guessing and we're waiting, but these people know what they're doing and they can tell us, yeah, it's this and this is what needs to be done to it and it's worth it or it's not, so uh that's what we propose and that's what we'd like to do.
Supervisor Hernandez?
Yeah, so, so Chief, yeah, I, my question is just in general um about leasing and the benefit of leasing, not that I wouldn't support you having the vehicles you need to
Sure.
Um, you know, when I think of leasing, I think it's, it's, it's usually like a business interest why you would lease, right? 'Cause you get a, there's a write-off, you know, maybe I'm wrong, but as as a government agency, I don't know what the benefit would be. Um granted, I get it, we, 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 to a certain extent, we minimize our responsibility and hand it off. Their job is to keep that car running and our job is to basically just use the vehicle and pay the payment. Um so, so I just wanted to understand why the focus is on leasing. Um and then is this adding to the current, I mean, are we basically getting more vehicles than uh um, than what we have right now with this agreement?
No, we'd be trading them out.
Okay.
We'd be uh surplusing the other three uh that are, um, they're costly because at, they're at a point where the maintenance to, to work on them is gonna cost more than the worth of the vehicle. Um they're kind of a safety issue at this point in time, only because, you know, there's been such advancements with new vehicles with, you know, being able to uh have a rear backup uh vision available to you. Uh a number of other vehicles, another, other safety, things like, you know, road stabilization, things that I'm not an expert on.
Too complicated.
But, long story short, I I think we, this is a wiser decision um than purchasing outright, because like, like the three vehicles we're trying to um remove from our fleet, um they will be utilized. And the moment that they're not benefiting us uh as a true fleet management contract, they're either gonna replace them or they'll simply tell us, you know, really, you're not using it enough, you don't need it, and it'll come off the lease. So um it's a flexibility that we have within the lease that I think is the most attractive characteristic of of what we're trying to do with the lease. Um and and if I didn't see it as beneficial, I, you know, I, I, we, I, we just purchased, you know, purchased three more vehicles at this point in time, but I truly think that this is a better way for us to go. Considering how, how we drive our vehicles and the fact that we don't, we don't put that much mileage on the car, so that allows for the time to go by, we don't have a whole lot. Uh I mean, no one here is selling the vehicles, fleet management, uh through Enterprise, will be able to sell those vehicles and and basically give the money back uh into the department, so we could actually utilize that money the best we can to, you know, then lease another vehicle, uh that would be better for for our usage.
I appreciate the explanation, Chief.
More, uh, Mister Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I I just have one quick question, Joe, um, I, it's, you have a F-one-fifty and a Toyota Camry and a Hyundai uh Nautra. Um what do you need the pickup for?
I'm glad you asked that question, actually, we are doing a new horticultural program out at the juvenile hall. And so we are gonna be utilizing it to, to haul different things, to be able to move different things. That, we used to have a uh, a pickup truck in years past and and, and it got so bad, it just rotted off its wheels and basically we had to remove it and we can never use it again. And we've always been in a need for, had a need for a pickup truck within the department. 'Cause otherwise, we, you know, we're always having to borrow from somebody and it's just, it's, you know, we need it for what we're doing, especially now that we're doing horticultural program out at the, the institution.
Okay, got it, I, I I recall that.
I know you have a F, you have a F-one-fifty, you wanna donate, is that what you're trying to say?
I'm a pickup guy myself, I'd be driving it all the time if I was a probation officer.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, Mister Chair, okay, when, when I was reading this last night, my main concern was the mileage and and so you're telling me that these cars will not exceed the twelve thousand per year limit?
No, I I I truly don't believe they will. The only way that we would exceed that is if we got an explosion in in uh children that we'd have to place out of county and they'd have to drive that much and and right now, we just don't have that issue and I don't foresee us having that issue, knock on wood, anytime soon. But that'd be the only thing that would cause that type of mileage on a vehicle that we would lease. And and if we did that, we wouldn't use one of those vehicles for, for those transportations, we would use a Crown Vic, which is, you know, got, got all the um security that comes with those vehicles.
Your, is your fleet a hundred percent capacity right now?
Uh, I'm not sure of the question.
Um, do you use the vehicles? Do you use the vehicles all the time that you have in your department?
Yeah, all the vehicles are used, some are used more than others.
But I mean, do you have vehicles that are idle?
Yes, yes, we do. We have vehicles that are idle, but mostly they're idle because staff members don't tend to use those vehicles. If we had the other vehicles, they would use them. That's why we're trying to rotate the three out that, in part, why we're trying to rotate the three out that we're trying to rotate out.
Do you understand where my question is leading?
Do we need them?
Yes.
Yes.
That's the real question. If you have idle vehicles, why do you need them?
Yeah.
Why you need these new cars?
No, we do, we do need them, otherwise, we wouldn't pursue this.
I'm beginning to sound like a prosecutor now, but...
Sorry.
I'll get this, hello.
No offense intended.
And then also, so this has a buyback, right, at the end of the 60 months?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
We went through this, looking at the city manager, and I see him smiling because he went through this at the city. And I want to tell you that a few reasons why I support this item. You know, what you mentioned, safety, key. Their staff, it sounds like, doesn't even want to drive the cars because they're so old, beat up, and perhaps uncomfortable and unsafe to drive.
Correct.
Obviously, the fuel efficiency, we're going to save a ton of money on fuel efficiency. We're going to have, you know, reduced lifestyle costs, reduce acquisition costs. I really support this item, and I'm glad you thought outside the box instead of just coming to us with a purchase request. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Supervisor Gillo, yeah, I actually appreciate that explanation, and that was the main sentiment. And it's funny, because I'm not trying to get into the weeds of how you guys do business, but to a certain extent, understand what the policy decision, why it exists.
Sure.
And, you know, especially if we haven't done this before. So, now that you've afforded my discretion, I appreciate it, and I support it.
Thank you.
Any public comment? Bring it back to the board, what's the wish of the board?
Move to approve for staff recommendation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. Thirty-nine will be real quick. Ah, I pulled it. This is dealing with the PR for the sheriff's station office. I had a couple of questions from some constituents about how the sheriff's office felt about this. I did my research prior, and I've been told by, I've been, yeah, I've been told by several people that they think the world of the company, that they meet with them, I think they said they meet with them at least twice a month. They take care of all the posts, and they're very happy with what has been provided, the services. The only thing I would like to recommend from some of the residents is can we have a little bit more local things on that, on those posts? And can we have them a little bit more frequent? Those are the only two things. Other than that, you know, I want to thank you for a great job everybody's doing, but I just want to make sure that I'm a voice of the people also, and that's...
I will definitely pass that on.
Okay. Any public comment? Bring it back to the board, what's the wish of the board?
Actually, hold on, Mr. Chair. I was trying to figure out, so this is at 300 and...
No, this is $30,000.
$30,000, and that's for...
For the media. We approved it last year.
Yeah.
And expires in 2020 for $30,000.
So, one year.
Okay, okay, no questions.
What's the wish of the board?
Motion to approve the item with staff recommendations, Mr. Chair.
And I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero, thank you very much. That concludes our consent. Now, we will head over to a public hearing. Resource Management Agency, hold a public hearing to accept public input and testimony on a proposed increase in the maximum allowable charge for solid waste collection rates with Recology San Benito. Adopt the resolution, adopting the maximum allowable solid waste collection rates effective the 1st of July of 2019.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Supervisors. I'm going to do a quick summary of what has transpired since April 16th, when we became, before your board, to send out the Prop 218 notices to the property managers. So, the board approved with the franchise agreement with Recology the approved formula for rate adjustments. Recology is to follow that formula, and it is based on the CPI, and the detail is in your staff report. Recology submitted their rate adjustment to staff. We reviewed it for accuracy and found that it was accurate. On April 16th, your board approved that we send the Prop 218 notices to our county property owners. As of Friday, and I'm going to ask Janet in a moment, as of Friday, we received 71 protest letters. So, if I could ask Janet how many protest letters we have at this time?
As of today, there's 73.
73, okay. So, the way the Prop 218 works is a protest majority is 50% plus one. So, that would be 2,365 protests. As Janet just attested, we have 73 protest letters. So, per the approved franchise agreement and conditions, the board and the other regional agency members, City of Hollister and City of San Juan, will be approving the same, that we are requesting your approval for the rate adjustments that were listed in the Prop 218 notice. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'm doing my research on this, obviously, it's a contractual obligation, and the way for the community to protest is, like you stated, and we didn't receive nearly enough protest letters. What I did learn was that sometimes the CPI rate actually goes down.
Correct.
And that does happen, and I can imagine that we should pay attention to that as integrated waste management and the county board of supervisors. That's something we actually should pay attention to on an annual basis. And if CPI is going down, we need to make sure we're adjusting down. This one happened to be a high one because of inflation and where we're at in the economy. So, I just really wanted to point that out and make sure that we pay attention to that. So, if we need to adjust rates down, we do that, and we don't miss that opportunity. Thank you.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the CPI did decrease, was it three years ago? And that was when diesel was going down rather than going up. So, it has been, it has been in the last couple of years, exactly. Any public comment? Bring it back to the board, but just for the record, I want to make sure there was 73 protest letters received, and we needed to have at least 50% plus one, and that was far from...
Correct.
From hit, so what's the wish of the board?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-55.
You have a second? I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Five zero.
It's always hard to vote for an increase, I know.
Ah, this takes us to number forty-four from Mr. Tom. Review the Land Conservation Act, request for compatible use determination, and make a determination of approving or denying the request for a installation of a telecommunications facility.
Morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. The first compatible use request that you have is Calen Craigor Family Trust. This preserve is 323 acres. It's a ranch located 30 miles south of Hollister and Airline Highway. The request is for an installation of a telecommunications facility on .02 acres of land. That's roughly less than 1,000 square feet. Our county ordinance does allow for communication facilities as a compatible use. Your committee recommended approval of this compatible use request. I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Questions? Any public comment? Bring it back to the board, what's the wish of the board?
Tom, was there a specific motion that you wanted to make them, have them find?
There is a motion in the package if they want to follow that.
You read pretty well, Jim. What's the...
Can you point that out?
I can read it, I'm just trying to find it right now.
If it's the one on 969?
Fresno State Bulldog.
969, is that the case?
I'm asking Tom, because that seems like the one from the LCA committee.
Yes, yes, it's...
So, would they just do the last part of that, saying that they approve the compatible use request based upon the findings and conditions of approval set forth in the San Benito County Code 19.01.023B, B, five, C, and F in Government Code Section 51238.1?
That's correct.
Okay, just the last part of that.
Okay.
Okay.
Let me find my spot here, I have it here, compatible use request, I'm scrolling down to... Where's the start of that suggestion?
Here, here.
I move. Thank you. I move that the Board of Supervisors approve this compatible use request based on findings and conditions of approval set forth in San Benito County Code 19.01.023 paren B, paren five, paren C, and paren F of, and, correction, and California Government Code 51238.1.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero.
We also have one other committee suggestion that they want to be run by you. And they discussed sending a letter to the state regarding reinstatement of the Williamson Act's subvention funds. So, our subvention payments were cut about 10 years ago, and that was a way we recaptured the loss in property tax for letting people be in the Williamson Act. So, in 2009 to current, we've lost about $7.5 million worth of monies, that's $750,000 annually. In 2009, this board went ahead and passed a resolution to prevent people from coming into the Williamson Act until we started getting those monies back. I've been in contact with the Department of Conservation, and their story is, when the economy would get better, you'll get your money, and that's never happened. So, the committee indicated they can get some support from the cattlemen's, the cattle wombs association, the farm bureau, and the San Benito Land Trust. They also suggested maybe contacting Assemblyman Robert Rivas as well. And so, basically, their recommendation or their suggestion was to maybe come up with a letter and send it to the state requesting, you know, reinstatement of the Williamson Act's subvention funds. In the past, it was $37 million statewide, and we got about 2% of that, $750,000.
Mr. Chairman, I want to add, I'm happy you brought this back up to us, Tom, because we tend to kind of let it slide. Supervisor Derek Cruz and I, we were in a series of meetings recently up in Sacramento with Senator Queblaro, and the Fresno supervisors came in, and we sat in on that meeting as well. And that was the first thing they spoke of, was, you know, what can she do to help us get some of that subvention funding back? And by rights, you're absolutely correct. The state has never seen better economic times. And they, to the point where they doubled, you know, putting the rainy day reserves, and they're addressing their reserves and breaking their arms, patting themselves on the back instead of meeting the contractual obligations that we have with this conservation contracts. And if we don't make some noise, we'll never get it. And we might as well just cancel the program. But now's a real good time, we have a new governor, some new leadership up there. I would strongly support sending a letter, not only to our state representatives, also our neighboring counties to stay engaged, and to the governor's office that, you know, rural counties are still struggling. And also, while we're at it, we should send a letter back to RCRC and CSAC to let them know that we want this issue to be, you know, continue to, to fight on this. It's a struggle for those organizations because they've kind of given up. And I don't want to give up. So, I, thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I? I just wanted to quickly add that I've actually reached out, or I've had staff reach out to our representatives to do a follow-up meeting to the meetings we had with our representatives in Sacramento. And that's one of the items that we want to follow up with them on. So, we're more than willing to do something on the Williamson Act piece, yeah.
Mr. Chair, I got a good question. Tom, when the state stopped backfilling those dollars, the county was being placed in the hole ever since, correct?
Yeah, that was $750,000 of money that was not shared, that went right into the general fund.
So, if we were to ask, and I guess I'll play devil's advocate here, if we were to ask the state to reinstate, are we going to be able to get all that money back, $700,000, or is it just from that day moving forward?
Just moving forward.
And then what happens if we get in another situation where the state said no, and we have opened up the Williamson Act, and now we have more lands on the contract, and then the state says, "We're just not going to give you any more money." Are we going to get in the same predicament we are today?
Well, we have about 75% of all the land in the Williamson Act. And so, you know, there are some other lands that probably could go in, but not as much. We have roughly 550,000 acres in the Williamson Act right now. And yes, they could take it away again, but it'd be good just to get it back and reinstate it.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
And correct me if I'm wrong, just for my educational purposes. The way it stands right now, we have a 10-year contract under the Williamson Act, and then at the end of the 10 years, it's an automatic renewal, correct?
That is correct.
So, to get out of the Williamson Act, the landlord has to make the petition, I want to get out.
A notice of non-renewal, get it recorded, yes.
Okay. So, it's to their advantage because their property taxes doesn't increase, it stays the same. Thank you, I appreciate, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Public comment? Bring it back to the board, what's the wish of the board?
I wish, I'll make a motion to direct staff to compose a letter for the chair to sign and to send to the stated agencies and representatives that I mentioned in my presentation.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on to number forty-six, or forty-five.
Forty-five?
Yeah. Hold a public hearing on the approval of the 2020, 2021 Community Services Block Grant, Community Action Plan.
I'd like to invite up our Health and Human Services Department, Enrique Arriola, he'll present this item.
Well, I think I'm just going to do a quick overview. So, good morning, members of the board and the public. This is Enrique Arriola, Deputy Director for Health and Human Service Agency. This public hearing is for the approval of the 2020 and 2021 Community Services Block Grant, Community Action Plan. We, as a recipient of Community Services Block Grants, are required to have updated and submit an approved Community Action Plan every two years. The Community Action Plan that is in your packet is, although it's titled draft, it's actually the most recent that we have, and we still are open for comments. Any comments received today, received here from the end of the month will be included, and then it'll be a finalized plan. Just to make the public aware, we have a sign-in sheet in the back, and those that would like to sign in, it would be great. So, as part of the Community Action Plan, we are required to conduct a community needs assessment. And that assessment was led by the Community Action Board. And based on the assessments, there's three priorities that the Community Action Board identified. One is youth, feeling that youth services in this community can improve, and with a long-term vision of somebody having a youth center where youth can go for services after school, tutorial, and perhaps sports facility, stuff like that. And another item is housing for low-income individuals. We held on April 30th a public hearing, a community conversation... We held on April the thirtieth a public hearing, a community conversation, and what we kept hearing is the lack of housing in our community. We are experiencing a housing crisis. We have a shortage of housing in our community, and especially low income. And just yesterday, just to make you guys aware, I got a call from the American Red Cross and the City of Hollis are caught enforcing, letting me know that there was, I guess, some type of fire. And a family in this home was being displaced. And what's really interesting, it's a home that's comprised of nine adults and thirteen children. So that is extreme overcrowded conditions, and this is not rare. It's actually happening a lot. So one of the goals identified in the Community Action Plan and by the survey that we conducted is housing. So that's something that we are addressing. We hope to improve that as well. And also homeless services is the third top priority that the Community Action Board through the survey that we identified. So the Community Action Board has been receiving CSBG Services funding for thirty-plus years. We are considered the Community Action Agency of San Benito County. And some of the services that we are currently providing is the winter shelter program during the winter months for homeless families. We operate other homeless programs that provides permanent supportive housing with Help Enhance Program, the Low Income Heating Energy Assistance Program for low-income individuals experiencing shut-off notices so they can continue with utilities at their households. There's also the operations of the Home Resource Center. We are in one point five years into. We opened the facility in December two thousand seventeen and operated by Community Homeless Solutions. And other homeless programs, other assistance programs, hotel vouchers, transportation assistance. So a number of programs in every year, depending on what the priorities are, the Community Action Board will set the priorities for that year through their, you know, process in approving different programs. So that's shared in the report that you have, so I just wanted to open it up to see if there's any comments from the board or the public.
Any public comment? Bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to just mention briefly, I wanted to thank Enrique. I've attended several of the meetings, and I believe I was at the public hearing. Enrique, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we've been to a bunch of different ones, and I definitely heard, heard the concerns, and youth would definitely raise to the top. And housing affordable and workforce housing for our folks that are out there working hard and can't live, you know, they're living in their cars. And it's not the, we definitely have obviously mentally ill folks and addicted folks that are having those troubles. We also have folks that are just everyday, hard-working people that are out having jobs that can't find a home to live in. So I appreciate you guys looking into and tackling solutions for this issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much for attending the public hearing.
What is the wish of the board?
Actually, Mr. Chair, this is, this is an item that Enrique and I always constantly discuss, and I like, I enjoy his candid answer to me when I come up with some ideas, and he says, oh, that's not doable. So I know that our staff out there is doing a good job and trying to maximize the minimum dollars that are available. I've always, you know, asked the question, let's try to spread the money throughout the whole community, and they try to do that. They try. They try it, and sometimes you're limited because you have to really hit certain guidelines, and I get that. This is, this is a roadmap of what the Community Action Board and Enrique's group plan to do for the next year. So it's very important that we, the board, provide some direction, and if we don't speak today, then we're okay with the direction that Enrique has presented to us. And like Jim, I'm sorry, Supervisor Gilio, I too attend some of the meetings and try to follow on what they're going, but they're so busy everywhere. It's just amazing the work that you guys do. Thank you. As of today, I've seen it. I seen it last night. Actually, I talked to Peter Hernandez last night about this, and I say, you know, we've been providing, we've been providing assistance service to low-income kids who can play sports, other programs in the past. And it's, you know, they come out to be pretty good, and some have not come up pretty good, but at the end of the day, the staff has the right intentions, and I will support them on this one, Mr. Chair.
What's the wish of the board?
Who wants to make a motion? I guess I will. Open the public hearing. I'll approve the twenty nineteen, twenty-one Community Service Block Grant Community Action Plan authorizing Chair of the Board and Deputy Director to sign the CAP.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All right. Five, zero?
Thanks, Enrique.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one comes from the County Council's Office. This is too long to read, so she'll come up and.
This is relating to new proposed hemp ordinance. The board saw the proposed hemp ordinance in May, and it was presented to the Planning Commission. And they made a couple recommended changes, as will be further explained to the board. But at this point in time, I'm going to read the title of the ordinance for a record, an Ordinance of the Board of Supervisors of the County of San Benito, adding Chapter seven point oh four to Title seven of the San Benito County Code relating to hemp entities. And if the board could turn to section point zero eight zero, and that's on page one zero four one of your packet. And it's in section D of setbacks. The much discussion occurred at the Planning Commission regarding the setback section. And it was modification of the hundred-foot setback from any boundary line of the property and also further down in the other sections relating to the hundred-foot setback. And they recommended that there be variances or exceptions to that hundred-foot setback. Of course, it doesn't apply in an industrial zone, but they further recommended that it didn't apply between contiguous parcels also engaging in help cultivation. So that if there's two parcels that were both engaging in cultivation, that that hundred-foot setback would not apply. Or with the, this was the one that was a lot of discussion on, a written agreement of neighboring property owners for a reduced setback which must be recorded, is valid for one crop, and must be renewed on an annual basis. And that was their recommendation so that if there was a neighboring property owner that did not want that hundred-foot setback, that they could engage in agreements on that. And there was discussion about being recorded and whether it should be valid for one year, one crop, et cetera, et cetera. But I see that there's a question.
Yeah, the question on that one was if the property is sold?
Yes.
The contract is null and void, correct?
No, it's because it's recorded, it's valid for one year, and so the new property owner would take with knowledge of that recordation. And then it would expire after that year period.
Perfect. I couldn't remember what way we went with, okay.
Yeah, so that's the reason that it's partly recorded, even though it's additional work, it would allow another property owner to know that there's something against the title of record for that year period.
For that remainder of the year.
Yes.
Perfect.
And that same change was made on the, the other hundred-foot setbacks, which is paragraph four and paragraph three of that same section. So that was the recommendation of the Planning Commission. The board has the ability to accept that recommended, recommended change or to adopt it without that recommended change. We're asking that the board, I've already read the title of the record, title of the ordinance for the record, we're asking that the board open the public hearing and then take the motion to waive further reading of the ordinance and continue to June twenty-fifth for adoption, so, and also order the display ad. So if there's any questions, I'm available for questions.
Any public comment? Sir, did you fill out a sheet? Grab one from the clerk, please, after your speech.
Thank you for, I'm going to ask a question. My name's Carl Saling. I am a San Benito County resident, and I just have a question on if the board is planning on implementing any kind of taxes or fees on hemp-related products that are either cultivated or manufactured in the county.
Yeah, I think that that might be an agenda item for the future board. We're waiting to see how many hemp entities might register with the Ag Commissioner. And I think that that will be brought back to the board's consideration at a future date. There is a tax for cannabis products.
Right, so I strongly would not agree with any sort of tax on hemp products. Hemp is now a, is now an agricultural product, just like broccoli or strawberries. So if there's a tax on hemp, then there should be a tax on all the other agricultural products in the county, which there isn't. So I would hope that, you know, the board treats hemp just like any other agricultural product.
Thank you.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other speaker cards? Ma'am? Seeing that, we'll bring it back to the board. Mr. Hernandez?
I think just a point of clarification, I think, you know, with what was mentioned earlier. Per the, with my discussion with the Ag Commissioner, it doesn't necessarily fall under the right to farm, so it doesn't, it can't just be labeled as a typical agricultural product in that sense. It doesn't have that same right, because we're still basically in the testing period of what happens with the implications of hemp, or just, you know, the industry of hemp. So it's hard to treat it any differently, right? Because the USDA even guidelines are a little bit different than just the ones that you would see for, for normal agricultural products. Outside of that, I did have a question. I was wondering, you know, when I was looking at this, I saw that we, we included it. I don't know if it's two, two separate things, but ultimately it's mentioning commercial cannabis and hemp at the same time, so I don't know if it's referencing that in. So I'm not, I'm not sure how, you know, it's, it's talk about regularly applicable to manufacturing laboratory testing of commercial cannabis, cannabis products. But then it also mentions hemp, so maybe, maybe I'm just not understanding the summary.
That's the next one, Peter.
Yeah.
We're on, we're on forty-six.
I looked at the wrong one. I apologize. Oh, so this is just the.
Yeah, this is strictly hemp, and then the next one is.
Got it.
Any further questions? What's the wish of the board?
Mr. Chair and for a city, for a county council, do we, do we, do you need a specific language in the motion, or just a motion to accept the Planning Commission's recommendations as stated in the packet?
Just per.
Be sufficient?
Per staff recommendation would be fine.
Okay, I'd make a motion that we approve this item per staff recommendation.
Second?
Under this point of discussion, if I, I want one clarification before I could vote on it. And there is, I don't necessarily disagree with the previous public speaker. But there's a variance that could be granted through the Planning Commission to alter the setback. So that made it fine for me. And, and you do have to, you know, follow state requirements as far as registration as well. And so it is a little bit different than most agricultural crops, but I'm not too far off of, you know, from your position on it, but, okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five, zero? Now forty-seven.
Okay, forty-seven is actually two separate ordinances which are combined into one.
And can you please explain it in detail for Peter, and I know Jim had a conversation with you earlier also, so it's kind of the same thing. Please.
Yes, let me explain the first of the two ordinances, and I'll read that title of the ordinance for the records, an Ordinance of the Board of Supervisors of the County of San Benito amending Chapter nineteen point four three of the San Benito County Code relating to the land use regulations applicable to manufacturing laboratory testing of commercial cannabis and/or cannabis products. And so this is the one that I think that Supervisor Hernandez was interested in because it's actually, let me clarify, it's, it's modifying when both of these are modifying that, the fact that cannabis can now be allowed with a conditional use permit in manufacturing and of testing in the agricultural and agricultural productive zones. When we first adopted the cannabis ordinance, it was only in the industrial zones. It did not allow it in the agricultural zones. And now that applicants are coming in, and it also, we have decided that hemp can be brought to the Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission is going to consider a hemp laboratory testing and manufacturing application in the near future in the agricultural zone, and they're going to make it a determination whether it's one of the uses similar to the ones that are already allowed in the agricultural zone. And it's, it's, we anticipate that the Planning Commission will make that finding. Then it's a question if, if hemp is going to be allowed, manufacturing of hemp is going to be allowed in the agricultural zone, since the process is very similar for cannabis testing and manufacturing and extraction, et cetera, should that also be allowed in the agricultural zone? Because hemp is silent in our county code, then the Planning Commission can make that termination that it's similar to the above uses. But because cannabis is expressly addressed in this ordinance, the Planning Commission couldn't make that same finding for cannabis because it's already been specifically determined by the board that it should not be allowed in the agricultural zone. So this code section's been kind of proposed for amendment to the board because there is, and I've heard that there's a demand for this to be allowed in the agricultural zones. And especially one application that wants to bring forth a testing lab in the agriculture zone, and they do not wish to rezone their property for industrial use. So this is to allow, this would allow manufacturing and testing of cannabis in the agricultural zones with a conditional use permit. So the county would still go under, go CEQA at that point of view. So it's, it would be a discretionary decision under CEQA, and then you'd also condition the projects that would apply through the CEQA process and the conditions of approval for the use permit. So it's not a blanket allowing them, it's just saying that they can apply for a conditional use permit. So that's the first ordinance.
Mr. Chair, so, and that also includes, Barbara, the, the, you know, ultimately mitigating the, even like the nuisance, because the nuisance seems to be the biggest concern for our Ag Commissioner. Because it's, you know, nuisance is technically kind of a relative term, so how do you, how do you get, you know, the county and whoever the party is to agree on what a nuisance is, right? I just want to protect us from litigation with, with issues where someone might claim, you know, we're not allowing them to do it, and then on our end, we're saying, no, you gotta, you gotta mitigate for this nuisance, right? If, so, you know, you would know better than me, but what does the statute say about nuisance and what the definitions are?
That's where I prefer hard and fast guidelines. So I think the biggest way to alleviate against nuisance is to have setbacks, which would alleviate from odor. But you can also, if it's an interior building, they can condition the use permit on air filters. And so if you establish adequate air filters, the smell is not noticeable from the outside as if it was in an unregulated greenhouse or an outdoor grow. Like if it's not properly filtered. If it's properly filtered, you can mitigate that. The best way to regulate against nuisance is to have clear and fast regulations, like you must establish this type of filter, you must have this type of setback. And so there's no, hopefully that we wouldn't get into any of the speculative analysis about whether there's an odor or not that's objectionable. I'd like to have criteria on each of those use permits to say, you have to do this, this, and this, and this, and then it's a check off of whether they've established that.
So the, basically the conditional use permit would allow for you to kind of take it as is, or, I mean, you know, you could amend it to be able to be specific to that project. Got it?
Yeah, they'd have to address that at the conditional use permit time period.
Okay.
And then the second one is related, and it's an Ordinance of the Board of Supervisors of the County of San Benito amending Section twenty-five point oh seven zero zero five, Title twenty-five of the San Benito County Code. To permit it as a conditional use in agricultural districts and manufacturing laboratory testing of commercial cannabis and cannabis products as well as hemp and hemp products. And this one is in our zoning code, and it's allowing, it's expanding the list of conditional uses that are allowed with conditional use permit. So basically, it's saying that you can do, instead of having the use determined as above by the Planning Commission as far as hemp products, it's actually right there. And it's saying that the board has considered this and determined that it should be allowed pursuant to a conditional use permit if the situation is right, et cetera. So it's allowing the planning to be commission to consider it at future applications um as a a a use that can be considered under a conditional use permit.
And that subsection DDEENFF, just so I'm clear on the sections we're looking at?
Yes.
Thank you.
And there was a minor uh change to the green waste definition too.
Thank you.
But um let me see, so uh the planning commission heard this and they didn't have any um recommended changes to this ordinance. And so I was hoping that the board, I was thinking that the board could hear open a joint public hearing regarding both of those ordinances and then we can take them separately and have the board make um a motion regarding each separate ordinance.
Sure. Any public comment? Did you have something to say, Dev? Yes, sir? We're gonna I'll give you ten seconds.
Tevin, can I sit down or may planning? Um I just wanted to just. Ca- capture this a little bit, so say if you had if you're a wine grower and you had all kinds of wine growing, but now you wanted your winery to process that wine and bottle it. It's not the same the way the code is written for cannabis right now is for them to have a bottle a bottling plant or to process that, they would have to go in town, go somewhere else where there's an industrial zoning. And buy extra property versus use something that's already under their control. And because it is under use permit here, we'd be able to take it case by case for nuisance or anything, and it just seems to make sense that we allow so many other crops and things to have their processing and packaging on property that it would extend here for cannabis as well. And then the what was the first one? I think really that's oh, and the other thing that also these little code tweaks allow is um we have existing facilities in the community that are underutilized. That have floor area that could do testing and could do other kinds of processing, happens to still be AP underneath it. And so where some business that already got an existing facility ready for someone to move in, we our code is written right now, oh, wrong zoning. And so that becomes off the market and someone had to look elsewhere. So um I think reusing existing facilities that already construct you don't have construction impacts, you bring back employment to the site, it just seems to be good business. So that's kind of a characterization of those two code changes before you um that staff is requesting.
Thank you for your help on this, appreciate it. Was there any public comment? Ma'am? Um bring it back to the board, uh Supervisor Batella?
Yeah, thank you, I want to thank staff for bringing this along, um you know it it's a the lab is specifically uh an entity that uh is in my district and. And it 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 was addressing the original ordinance and with the intentions that you know that they would have the opportunity to submit an application in which it would be a good thing for them and. And a and a very good opportunity for the county to derive some uh revenue from the cannabis testing. And but we had to fix this um oversight on 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 the zoning and just as uh Mr Brown stated. There are existing facilities out in the unincorporated areas, agricultural zoned, and uh this is an opportunity for them to uh you know find find uses and and it's a benefit for everybody. And that's very true, you know, when uh I I think one of the notes that we should keep track of for future boards and future, you know, considerations by the county is when we do have manufacturing or processing. We have to go and really evaluate the impacts that that processing plant makes, uh you know, for instance, even uh earthbound farms or some of the bigger processors we have in our county. Uh the trucks make a heck of a impact on our roads and and we you know hopefully would develop a a development agreement for manufacturing of hemp or cannabis. Uh and and uh we have to look at those things, but this is a a good step forward and I appreciate you know all the work.
Just quickly, Mr Chair, I I support this item for a few reasons, I had some questions and I appreciate Barbara answering those questions for me and concerns. Um number one is is if if we didn't have something like this in place, we're going to be adding traffic and big trucks and all the things that we're trying to minimize on our roads and the impacts on our roads. Because you'll have to take your product, whatever that is, whether it's lettuce or cannabis or hemp, and you have to transport it to get processed, so if you can try uh test and process it on site, that's going to be helpful. The one thing I I want to echo is I want to be cautious of is um in our development agreements and when we're approving these items, we need to look at how many employees, how many cars, and this goes across countywide. And uh turn lanes, um acceleration, deceleration lanes, all the things that we need to pay attention to with uh traffic, I really want to make sure that we're paying attention to those um for all of our uh commercial additions in our county, which I wholeheartedly welcome. Commercial growth, we just need to make sure we're uh careful with um how we get them on and off of our roads, thank you for all your staff time on this.
What is the wish of the board?
I'll make a motion to waive further reading of proposed ordinance and uh find the uh adoption and of the ordinance is exempt from CQ pursuant to state CQ guidelines, sections fifteen oh s- uh oh sixty one subsection B three. And fifteen uh three oh eight and continue the matter for to for adoption of the ordinance, uh chapter nineteen point four three of the Samuel County Code to June twenty fifth, two thousand nineteen.
Do you have a second? Second?
Second, Mr Chair.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero? Does that cover both of them Barbara or do we have to?
Do the second one as well.
Okay.
If there's no further discussion, move things along, uh waive further reading of the proposed ordinance, find the adoption of the ordinance is exempt from CQ pursuant to state uh CQ guidelines, sections fifteen oh sixty one. Subsection uh fif- B three and fifteen three oh eight, continue the matter for adoption of the ordinance amending chapter nineteen point four three to June twenty fifth.
Yes, second?
Second. And I think that let me just clarify for a second. I I I see that there was an error in that motion, it should be um as the amending chapter twenty five point oh seven, uh there was an error in that motion uh just because it was apparently misri- mis copied on the uh AIT.
Oh, okay, uh so the correction uh.
Is to adopt or to continue the ordinance amending chapter twenty five point oh seven.
Okay, amending uh chapter twenty five oh five. Yeah, that's right.
Second? Hi me?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero? This uh concludes the uh public hearing. I'm going to do something that I usually don't do, we're going to take a five minute break. Give us a second, uh we'll give Peter another minute. According to Jaime, he said just go, so um this brings us to our regular agenda. We have uh number forty eight dealing with uh the homeless programs update from the Health and Human Services Agency and the City of Hollister. We have uh our city manager from the Hollister, um Bill Vera, the esteemed city manager.
Hi, hi Board, um so the item before you, the the board requested an update on the homeless situation from from both the city and the county and the effort specifically relating to Dunn Park. The County of San Bernardino is not unique in in having a homeless issue or crisis um across the state, it's a there's approximately an estimated a hundred and twenty nine. Hundred and twenty nine thousand nine hundred and seventy two homeless um people throughout the state, so um. The county team administrative's office has met with the with the city, um thank you, the city actually hosted us um and brought together HSA. To 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 discuss this um just last week and today Enrique from Health and Human Services is here to provide an update on on the homeless. Programs that we have in the county and then um Bill is also here to provide an update on what the city is doing, so um Enrique.
Thank you Dulce and again good morning, members of the board and the public. So wanted to give a summary of all services that are being provided here in our Department Health and Human Services Agency, Community Services Workforce Development. Uh first, I also wanted to give just a glimpse of statistics from the two thousand seventeen homeless census. And just to make you aware, the two thousand nineteen census report is not available yet, so when it is, we will come back and share with you. So if you look at a longitudinal trend that in two thousand eleven, we had a hundred ninety three homeless individuals that were counted, uh then two years later, three hundred sixty five in two thousand fifteen, six hundred and fifty one. And we had a nineteen percent dip in two thousand seventeen, so I'm very curious what our data will show on the two thousand nineteen census. Uh and from those, twenty three were sheltered, uh three twenty three percent and seventy seven percent were unsheltered. And we look at age under the age of eighteen, that was ten percent of those counted, uh eighteen to twenty four years of age, that's nine percent and twenty five and older was eighty five percent, which represents the bulk. First episode of homelessness, twenty two percent said they uh that was the first time experiencing homelessness and seventy eight percent uh that was not. Uh so I'm not going to go over all these, but this is just to give you a glimpse of of some of the statistics and prior residents prior to homelessness, ninety percent uh said they were resident of San Bernardino County, so I'll go over the next one. So I'm going to just uh highlight each of the programs that we currently operate. And the first one here is the Home Resource Center and that stands for the Housing Opportunities Meals and Empowerment. And this highlights phase one because this project has three different phases. And this is the year round uh shelter that is operated by the community homeless solutions, they've been operating this uh center since the grand opening of December two thousand seventeen. We are one and a half years in operation, it has fifty beds, twenty eight for men and twenty two for women and the total budget to operate this uh year round facility shelter is six hundred and seventy thousand. And so here you have uh broken down by phase, so it's a. So it's a facility that has three phases. The first one is a Home Resource Center, which is complete. We had a budget of a one point five million dollars acquired by CDBG. Phase two is the Whole Person Care Training and Service Center, one and a half million dollars, and that's also CDBG funding. And ju- just to let, let you know, the phase two grand opening happened a couple of weeks ago. And we're really proud that now we have completed both phases. And five years before, it was just in concept, they were barely looking at having. We didn't even have the funds, so five years later, five and a half years later, we've accomplished so much, and thank you for all your support. And I do wanna thank Adam Goldstone for leading the, this process and working with us, and it's certainly an endeavor, and very much appreciated. And phase three will include transitional units. We secured a one point four million dollar grant, and it'll include eight units. They're gonna be small, about approximately two hundred square feet. And they'll have a common kitchen and common laundry facility. And it'll be right behind here at this facility at eleven sixty-one San Felipe. And let me go on. So this is just to show the three different phases. The light purple is phase one, was completed a year and a half ago. Phase two was just recently completed, and that's the blue. And the light yellow in the back is the eight transitional units that we will be working on, and I'm hoping that this will be done hopefully by next summer, so. That's, that's moving forward. And just to give you some, the attendance report for this year so far, we have averaged forty-three guests that are staying at the facility, so we have fifty in total. Males have been pretty much on, you know, at, at, at the total that we have, you know, we have twenty-eight, so. The females are the ones that we have not reached full capacity. It's just the nature, we've tried to continue to provide outreach, but you know, at the moment, males are usually full, and the females usually have about four, five, six, seven, depending on the night. So it's some general numbers, total and duplicated guests, that we have served two hundred and thirty-eight since opening, and duplicated guests, eighteen thousand nine seventy-four, these are all returnees. Total meals provided is fifty-seven thousand one fifty-one as of May. And total individuals obtained housing, sixty, and entered employment, forty-five. And the winter shelter program is operated between December and March.
Enrique, can you go back one slide, I just wanna make one statement, obtain housing and obtain employment? Now that's a big win, you're telling me sixty people went from being homeless to finding a house? And forty-five went from homeless to obtaining employment?
That is correct.
Now that's, you know, that's a big applaud to you and your group, that's what we're after. You know, we keep hearing homeless, 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 but those are the numbers that I wanna see. That's, I'm, I'm extremely, I'm speechless, I'm so proud that we're able to do that. And once again, I just, I thank you for everything you've done.
And thank you for your comments, I do wanna say that part of this is not just trans, emergency shelter, it's also the case management, a whole person type of philosophy, so the staff that we have also provide some case management, coordinated services with nonprofit agencies, and we also have some other funds that help like rapid rehousing. So rapid rehousing is helping individuals that are ready for housing, that obtain housing, and helps with rental assistance on a monthly basis for a period of time. So there's some support systems in place that help that process, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
So this program is for homeless families, we normally serve twenty to thirty, depending on the funds that we get per year. It's operated at the migrant center, and every year counting households, we serve up to a hundred or more. And families here do pay a small security deposit of three hundred plus three hundred dollars a month. At the conclusion of the program, we return these funds for them to use for permanent housing. And about fifty to sixty percent traditionally have secured permanent housing beyond the program. And during the program, we also provide case management, housing leads, and other types of workshops to get to stability. And those that don't get the permanent housing usually go back to the same situation, and with families, it's usually a family member, someone they know. And we continue to try to help them thereafter, but you know, this program is very valuable, and it annual costs is about eighty thousand dollars a year. The Help Enhance Program is a HUD-funded permanent supportive housing program that is part of our continuum of care. Our allocation is usually in the two hundred and forty thousand, this case a little bit over two hundred and forty-two thousand. We have, this program, we do master leasing, so we lease directly from landlords. We have twelve units that we lease directly from landlords, and we have either a combination of families and individuals in these units, and this is part of our solution to permanent housing and ending homelessness. So we've been funded by HUD for the last six years, and we hope to continue to get funded from HUD, you know, or even increase the budget for this program. So very valuable program. The Whole Person Care is a program, pilot program that we secured funds, it's a five-year program. Annual, we have a budget of about nine hundred thousand dollars, it helps with the social workers that we have in place with services. We have a multi-service team and staff that does the individual assessments, a navigation team, case managers, advocates, and this is a very time-intensive program. Chronic homeless individuals with mental health issues and disabilities require a lot of support from, in, taking them, driving them to appointments, not only locally, but also out of town to Stanford. They just need this level of support for them to improve their chances of being successful or becoming more stable. And there's also supportive services, housing assistance, transportation assistance, so forth. So we have enrolled so far forty-four individuals, twenty-four are active, and six have secured housing. And part of our goal is to reduce the emergency visit, and we've had, based on our statistics, sixteen percent reduction in ER visits, and forty percent reductions in hospitalization reductions from clients that we are working with right now. So it's, it's a very valuable program, and I welcome everyone to come visit us, eleven sixty-one San Felipe Road. That's what we call phase two of our Home Resource Center. This next program is a CalWorks Housing Support Program, it's also operated by CSWD. And this follows the, the, the philosophy of rapid rehousing. The goal is to get families that are in CalWorks, that are homeless in housing quickly as possible. So this program provides twelve months of rental assistance. We also pay security deposit, up to two months, depending on what the law allows. And also helps with utility assistance, emergent assistance, and it has a case manager assigned to it. We've served approximately forty families over the last three years. It's, our allocation usually is about a hundred and sixty-six thousand, so we are able to serve, you know, anywhere, depending on the cost of the rental unit, ten to fifteen individuals or families. So this is also, in my opinion, a very valuable program, because it stabilizes families and gets them out of homelessness.
Enrique?
Yes.
Do you have data on this, on this program? Of those ten to fifteen families you help out in the twelve-month period, that they actually find permanent housing after, at the conclusion of the twelve months?
I could get you that data. I could say that after twelve months, if this program was set up for twenty-four months, it will be a challenge. And it has been a challenge for them to maintain housing. So we have individuals that become stable, that get jobs and higher-paying jobs, and are able to maintain it. And we get families that request assistance again, so we're just in, in, in an environment that the high cost of housing is causing homelessness and rehomelessness as well, but I could surely follow up and get some statistic on that.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
So rapid rehousing is funded as part of our COC through the City of Salinas. It's the Emergency Solutions Grant, we also operate this program. And this program offers short-term rental assistance, six months. And it also has a case manager that provides further assistance to individuals or families. We serve ten to fourteen, and our annual budget this year is ninety-five thousand dollars. And this program works really hand-in-hand with Whole Person Care, the Home Resource Center, and families that were in the shelter and try to get into stability. The Housing Disability Advocacy Program is operated by HHSA. This program assists disabled individuals who are experiencing homelessness apply for disability benefit program, while also providing housing assistance and supportive services. Annually, it's approximately thirty to forty individuals, and the goal is, is again, to try to get them into services, disability benefits, and more stability, and this budget here, seventy-five thousand, it's actually a two-year grant, so we're, we are in our second year at the moment. We, the Community Action Board, through discretionary funding that we get in CSBG, allocates usually about fifteen thousand dollars for hotel vouchers. And because the funding is very limited, we usually prioritize families, elderly, and disabled individuals to, to hotel vouchers up to three nights. If they require more, we have accepted another three nights, depending on their needs. So every year, we help, well, it says four hundred and three, I wish we could help four hundred and three. So total clients, twenty-five to forty or so per year, and it's a very much needed program. If we had fifty, a hundred thousand dollars, we could certainly help with that, but it's a very limited program, and I hope we could expand this program in the future. We also provide transportation assistance, we usually budget about three thousand dollars. And we purchase transportation tokens, and we give to individuals in need to get to appointments to our facility. And it's been provided for years now through our unit at CSWD, HHSA. So I wanted just to highlight the funding that we have secured over the last five years. We have the name of the program, the annual budget, and in some programs, we're just a one-year funding. In other cases, two years, and others has been in continuous funding. So for the Home Resource Center, our budget is six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And because we've operated two years, so it's really, you know, one point two, three, four million. And I do wanna say here that, you know, the City Hollister this past year did contribute about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the center. And the year before that, twenty-five thousand dollars for the warming shelter, and the year before that, fifty thousand dollars for the warming shelter, when we had it at the migrant center. So now they've contributed, and we hope that that continues annually. Winter Shelter Program, our budget is eighty thousand, you know, over the last five years, about four hundred thousand. Help Enhance Program, that's a permanent supportive housing, two hundred and forty thousand or so, and over the last five years, about one point two million. Whole Person Care, nine hundred thousand, over the last five years, two point two five. And we are in our two and a half years in operation, in our third year. CalWorks Housing Support Program, over the last four years, because we've had this program five, you know, four years, is six hundred and sixty-four thousand. Rapid Rehousing, two hundred and eighty-five thousand, over the last five years, we are in our third year in operation. Hotel Vouchers, about seventy-five thousand over the last five years. Transportation Assistance, fifteen thousand, Home Resource Center. Now this is the construction cost to, for phase one and phase two, three million. Home Resource Center Transitional Units, one point four-five million dollars that we got. And most recently, and Tracy shared the good news with your Board, we received a funding allocation of one point eight seven one million dollars to fund different activities, approximately two hundred and eighty thousand dollars will help transition age youth. The Hollister Youth Alliance, they were a co-applicant, so they will run the youth component to this funding. We have a little over four hundred thousand for what we call the Outreach Team. It'll include a social worker, a housing navigator, and also a deputy sheriff that'll help with the Outreach Team and go and, whenever needed, to encampments and look at providing supportive services and, and building rapport and engagement and relationship building. Yes? So, and, and the one point one million dollars was for capital improvement projects. This will include fourteen transitional units that we've identified for, it'll be right next to the trailer park at the migrant center. So that project is going forward, and seventy-five thousand dollars for rental assistance, which, which, which results in one point eight seven one million dollars. And we're still waiting for the contract, and hopefully we'll get it soon, and start providing these valuable services. The Homeless Advocacy Disability Program, a hundred fifty thousand, we are in our second year. And we also received beautification project, forty thousand dollars over the last two years, where we hired a group of homeless individuals, and they helped with cleanup projects within the community. And the last one that we have here is a tenant-based rental assistance program. We've been funded twice, and our most recent funding is half a million dollars for twelve-month rental assistance. We are still waiting for the contract from HCD, and when we do, we will kick this program off. So total over the last five years is thirteen million, six hundred thirty-four thousand and ninety-eight. And every year, we'll continue through your support and Community Action Board and all our partnerships.
Mr. Chairman, I could comment on this one slide?
Sure.
I wanted to say, th- thank you. A lot of these programs are proactive, going out and applying for grants and, and looking for funding. And it's not just things that roll into the county without effort. And I think that we need to recognize that as a Board, and, and thank you for the effort to go out there and go after these grants. Again, these are not easy to chase, there are hundreds of pages of applications and reporting and, and checking back in with the state and the federal government, so tha- thank you. I don't want that to go unnoticed, and I appreciate your efforts, and I hope they continue to go after these funds that are available if we can chase them. Thank you.
And I appreciate your comment, just to give an idea, the CDBG application is at least four inches.
Yeah.
It's like this, huge application, so thank you very much. I think we have many opportunities, for example, to continue our partnerships, improve our collaborations. And this includes really anyone that has an interest in helping our, our homeless individuals, the City of Hollister, School District, City of San Juan Batista, community-based organizations. So I think, you know, proactively, it's, it's looking beyond what we do and, and improving our partnerships and collaborations. I also think that there's an opportunity for the City Hollister to prioritize homeless programs for future CDBG funding. The county is an eligible jurisdiction, and the, the city as well, and we have been applying for homeless services strategically. And I think there's an opportunity there as well for the city. I also think that there's a need for day services, we have a shelter for the night, there's nothing really for the day. San Bernardino County, to continue with proactive fund development efforts of what we just talked about. And also implementation of San Bernardino County's First Time Home Buyers Program, so this is not in the list that I shared. And it's not just for homeless, but the, these funds that we received is for the first-time self-help, Southside Project that we got funded for, and, and really, it opens the doors for any, any individual or family in need of housing. So our goal is to implement this program, and at the same time, increase the low-income housing inventory. And I think this project includes about twenty-two homes that's gonna be led by CSTC. I also think there's active engagement with the local homeless planning committee. This committee has been meeting for years, and the next meeting is scheduled for July eighth at two P M. It'll be at the new Whole Person Care Training Facility, eleven sixty-one San Felipe Road. So July eighth at two P M, and I think, you know, just to continue to attend and including nonprofits and the city and so forth. And also, the City of Hollister has made, I already mentioned, you know, contributions over the last three years for operations of shelter. And, and also just to continue to, with annual contributions, I think would be a good opportunity there as well. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chair, I, I just, real quick comment, thank you, a lot of work here, and there's still more to come. I do, I do see that the City Hollister has made those contributions, I was just wondering if, you know, I know Billy's out there, hey Billy, if the city had, you know, the, the leadership to, to, you know, add, increase the amount, because the county is putting a lot of money on the table.
And I think there's an opportunity, so hopefully that does happen.
I wanted also to thank Enrique, you know, me and Supervisor Delacruz visited the homeless center with Tracy and Enrique, and it was, you know, the, the biggest thing that really stood out to me is, is the drive that these folks have to be proactive. One of the things that really stood out to me, and I really appreciate it. One of the things that really stood out to me and I really appreciate Enrique is, you guys were already working on things before the funding had even come. So to a certain extent, the, the game plan made it an opportunity so that once the funding was available, you went after it. And then at that point, you had the ability to, to, uh, to really expand. Um, so it just, it, at that point, all I kept thinking is, they're very proactive, right? They, you already had a vision and you kept working on it and, and, uh, you know, you didn't sit and wait to be reactive. You were actually working on it and at that point I saw a, a huge momentum, uh, builder. Because then all of a sudden you have other agencies visiting San Bernardino County as a model county for, uh, trying to address this issue. So I just thought it was pretty amazing that you guys have the passion and the drive you do and, and it, it definitely was, uh, a moment where I felt really proud of my community. Um, and I, you know, a- all the things that you had named off just really stems, or even points to the reality that, you know, homelessness is something that could be avoided. And, and, and granted, there's always, you know, those cases that are really, really tough cases, but that doesn't make the, the whole, that there's a lot of folks that if they get the right help. Uh, they want to, they want to move on and, and move up to bigger and better things and, um, and I know housing is a big part of that element. So I think that's a focus and I know, uh, you're starting in that, in that right direction, so I, I really appreciate all you guys do. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could just add really quick that we are in the business of human services and I think the right thing is to help those, uh, in need. And, and I'll be honest, we will not stop until we end homelessness. Uh, we are part of the ten-year plan with, uh, COC and. Our hearts are out there and I also want to say that I have an incredible team. Really true, true honest and incredible team that deserves the, the applause, so they're great. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I want to thank you Enrique for all, all, all your hard work and the whole department's hard work. Uh, earlier this morning, we approved a, a, a contract for, uh, Mr. Vasquez. A- as well because, uh, you know, Supervisor Gilio pointed out, uh, you know, we have to be really going after these grants and be successful. And, and our department, uh, you've been successful and we're able to do things and for a small community, um, it, it makes a difference. And, uh, as the chairman noted a little earlier in the presentation about the, you know, the change of, uh, opportunity in life. Uh, for, you know, people that obtain employment, uh, obtain, uh, housing. Coming out of this program, it, what we didn't see in the, in the, these budget numbers is, you know, the impact. Uh, making a difference of people not going to the hospital and being off the street. Uh, it, that's, that's a tremendous amount of money kind of flipped the other way. It's an investment well worth, um, taking. And, um, you know, I'm happy to be, been very supportive of, you know, the efforts. And, uh, look forward to that, uh, next homeless, uh, planning committee meeting. It's a very energized, uh, group and, uh, good work.
Thank you.
So really quick, you said July eighth Enrique and.
Yes.
And the location at the Hope Person Care Facility?
At two P M.
Do we have any, uh, comments from?
City Manager.
Yes, sir, this team, City Manager, can you please, uh?
All right, well, if you'll allow me, uh, good morning, if you'll allow me, uh, just a few minutes. It, as a staff member, let me tell you how much it's appreciated when the boards or councils recognize the work that they actually do as an organization. Because I can tell you that Tracy and Enrique's group worked tirelessly to, to get all that money that you actually see up there. So that is good and I, I appreciate, uh, you acknowledging that. Um, as far as, um, uh, where the city is, is going and, and concerned, we did have, as Dulce men- mentioned, we had a, a meeting. Um, uh, where we all kind of got together and, and, and talked about various things about, uh, where things can be potentially modified, uh, et cetera. I think we can work on doing that. Um, Enrique is excited about possibly working with us on, um, our next CDVG application. Which is, I mean, I'm not, I can't sit here obviously right now and commit that the council will, will, um, go that direction. But it's certainly, uh, that's something that staff would recommend. So as you know, CDVG works in the sense where if, once you've received the grant, you have to expand at least fifty percent of those proceeds prior to you, um, applying once again. Um, if you'll, if you'll remember, uh, the City of Hollister received a CDVG grant in two thousand and seventeen for some services. Uh, through Havana's and other organizations, that money has been spent, but a bulk of that money was to start the first phase of the River Park, um, Trail. Um, we've had some hurdles, uh, over the last couple of months. I think we're on track. Um, and we should be able to start that project relatively soon and get a bulk of that money spent, um, pretty quickly actually. So we should be available, um, if not by the next round of CDVG funding, certainly by the following round. Uh, and again, um, I won't be here, but I will, uh, certainly encourage the folks that are here to, to work with, um, um. You and Enrique's group or Tracy's group to, to try to get a, um, uh, a CDVG grant for those types of things. And again, as you noticed, one of the key things for us obviously is, is the day, uh, service component, um, to, to, uh, uh, this issue. And that's one of the things that I think that the city would certainly try to support as, as much as possible. Because as we know, we have some services at night, but during the day, um, they don't necessarily have a place to go. And then that's when, um, they actually become more visible and that becomes the issue for us. So and I also understand that, um, some of the questions we had going on about Dunn Park or Park Hill, um, some of our other facilities. Um, uh, as well as, um, McCarthy Park, so if you'll allow me just two minutes, um, I can go through those as well. So as you know, or if you'll recall, Park Hill was one of our, our largest problems, uh, when it came to homelessness issues. So the City of Hollister made a, a pretty sizable and heavy commitment on, on redoing the playground and the area, removing the old barbecues up there. And relocating them to an area that's probably more conducive to having, uh, families enjoy the park. And what we've noticed up there, at least over the last year and a half or two, is that, um, that the hanging around, so to speak, or, or the, or the area or the environment. Um, has improved greatly. Um, with Dunn Park, you'll probably start to see the same thing. Um, we've made some investment and obviously in the tennis courts a few years ago, we're improving some of the things over there. Uh, we have, uh, a new area that's going in under construction right now. I don't know if everybody knows what that is. It's basically just kind of like art in the park, so you'll see cornhole, um, and ping pong tables, et cetera. Um, CAO Espinoza just challenged the City of Hollister to a tournament when it's opened. Um, have no problem beating you guys at that. And then of course McCarthy Park is about to open, which is about a two and a half million dollar adventure that we had going on there. It'll be open hopefully around the first part of July, maybe the last part of July. Um, so we have some, we've done some investment in some of the parks, um, in our, our neighborhood. Um, from a staff's perspective, we've recently, um, the city council recently adopted, uh, a new position, a new C S O position. That will be working on the weekends. Um, that C S O position will be able to do some monitoring of the parks on Saturday and Sunday. Cause as you know, right now, we have one community service officer, um, that mostly does their stuff, uh, Monday through Friday. Um, so that's another availa- another, uh, proactive approach for, for trying to, uh, uh, deal with some of the issues at least on, on the weekends. Um, if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy, yes.
Since you're up there, the skate park.
Uh-huh, which one?
Uh, the one in Vet- at Vets.
Okay.
They, uh, there's some requests to put the lights on. Do we know anything about that?
I, I have not heard, so, um, with McCarthy Park, there's going to be an item coming to council to, uh, McCarthy Park has a basketball court. Right now, all of our parks are basically open from dawn to dusk essentially in this city. We don't really allow park, um, uh, you to, um, to be in the parks after dark. Um, with the new basketball court over at McCarthy Park, there's a huge desire to have the lights on so that kids can play basketball, um, in the evening hours and, and the spring and the fall. I don't know what time that is going to be, but if that's something that, uh, is, is desired by the, the skate community to, to have some lights on at the, at the, uh, park. We can look in, at doing that as well and try to keep the hours, uh, roughly the same.
Thank you.
You know, I have one question for the City Manager or for Enrique. Uh, I, the part, uh, the committee meetings that, uh, I participated in, uh, we were struggling to find. Okay, if you push, you know, these, the, the folks that don't want to go to the homeless shelter. For one reason or another, they'd rather be out in the open and camp out and, and do their thing. And, uh, they're a nuisance. They're a flat-out nuisance. And, uh, they're, they're in places where they don't belong. And, um, so we push them, push those folks out, they go to the next place that they're a nuisance. And we were trying to figure out a location, uh, that, no, you're go over here or, you know. And, and, uh, we've been trying brainstorm on ideas. Has there been any progress from your perspective a- as far as, uh, us working together for, uh, uh, an alternative? Location for the people that don't want to come to the shelter?
Yeah, um, thank you Supervisor Patel. Uh, I have heard those same conversations. Um, and, uh, like many communities in this, in the state of California, some cities that are picking locations that actually do that. Um, we have struggled to try to find that exact location that, that's one that's relatively close to services. Um, but also doesn't necessarily get us in the, in the NIMBY. Now, the two places that I've talked to in, in the, in the past have been, I've been kind of shut down rather quickly just because they happen to be in areas. Um, that don't necessarily, are not that conducive to having, uh, a, a camping area set up. Uh, for, you know, for, for folks to, to, uh, uh, to be able to occupy. Um, so I think that's one of the huge challenges is that from, um, not only the city council's perspective, but also the boards. Is having the strength and the courage to say, no, this is where we're going to do it. And regardless of the amount of pushback that we may get from adjacent property owners or the property owner or whoever's property we're happy to do it in. As you have to say, at some point, this is a, this is the necessary. Um, it, it, it may be a necessary evil, but ne- nevertheless, we can't always just decide to say that it's not appropriate here. It's going to be better somewhere else.
Yeah, and if I could maintain floor for one last comment on, on that subject. It, it, we'll always have a problem with Dunn Park and McCarthy Park and the, uh, Dun- uh, Park Hill until we find that location.
Or the river. I mean, the river is a, is a huge one. And one of the things that we've also decided, I hopefully as agency is, is, um, we don't necessarily want to push people from one jurisdiction to another and back and forth. That's what we've been doing for the last probably seven to ten years and that obviously isn't working either, so.
Mr. Chair, if I could ask City Manager, yeah, um, two things. One is, uh, and I appreciate your, your, your being here because this is obviously really important. Um, one is I, 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 you know, I attended a meeting with Supervisor Delacruz. We sat down with, 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 uh, Councilman Lenore and, and Resendez, um, and actually Health and Human Services around this topic. And part of the thing that was mentioned was they were, they were considering, or the city was considering putting a fence around the, the building.
The clubhouse?
The clubhouse, um, and I thought that would be a good temporary solution. I mean, I agree with Supervisor Patel, I ultimately, right now, we at least have to consider some kind of temporary solution versus a non-solution or, or just ignoring it. Um, you know, so, so I appreciate you bringing up the C S O because I know that, that surveillance, I think, would be a part of that solution. Granted, there's a time and energy with that. Um, so one of the things that was talked about is kind of having like a focus on making the park and, you know, because technically they're really for the community, for the families. Uh, as an active location, so and the more activity there is from families, right? But granted, the surveillance part of it is really important for these families and actually, uh, I, I spoke with, with one of the constituents from that community. And, um, one of the things was mentioned is it, it's, there's a frustration because there's basically illegal activity happening by some of these folks. And, uh, you know, they, they feel like they get a big pass. Um, but, you know, and, and on their end, it's like they, they wouldn't be allowed to do the same thing, so. It, I get it and that's kind of the frustration between the issues that we have with the state and the, and, and the, the, the bills that they're writing and the stuff. Ultimately, it puts more pressure on our, us as communities. So at, at the end of the day, I just feel like we have to come up with our own solutions separate. And that's why I thought, well, maybe an active park along with surveillance had, would be a good focus. Because if you have, like I said, if you have people not worried about going to the park because they're going to see bad things or drugs or, you know, or even exposing their kids to needles and stuff like that. But then on the other el- element of it, even if there was a way to get surveillance, just to make ultimately, so there's not that comfortableness for certain folks. That are homeless to do things that they shouldn't be doing, right? If they're enjoying the park, that's different, but for the most part, um, we create an opportunity to really get those parks to be active where there's a lot of more families. Um, even, one of the things was tossed around was even frisbee golf. Granted, that's not a good location for it. But something to that effect where there's, there's a lot of activity to where it, it, it pushes at least, it protects that park. And granted, we just have to come up with not just a short-term solution like that, but then a long-term. So, um, so all things considered, I, I hope that maybe we can work together with the city to come up with that common solution.
If you don't mind Supervisor Hernandez, I'll just give you an update on the, on the clubhouse, uh, area. Um, we've, uh, we talked a little bit about fencing the entire fence, that just, uh, the entire park, that just wasn't feasible. So we are actually looking at fencing just the clubhouse area with either a four or six foot sort of wrought iron decorative type fence. That's another part of it. We want to make sure that we kind of keep the historic nature of it. Um, and it just gives us another tool for all officers that when the building is closed or when it's not being occupied through a rental or whatever the case is. Um, that they have that much more, um, ability to, to remove those individuals who may be, may be hanging out. Um, we are, um, we've got some indirect lighting that's going to be going on underneath the awning of, of the clubhouse that will likely be on. Hopefully it's not too offensive or atrocious to the, the neighborhoods. We're going to try to, um, make sure that we direct it right straight down. Um, and then obviously there are cameras in the park. Um, and that will probably continue and all I, I, I encourage everybody to, um, make sure they go visit the park, right? Um, if we're down, if we're down there and we're there, um, then hopefully that other element, um, decides to go, decides to go elsewhere. Especially if they're going to be doing something wrong. But as you mentioned, it is a very, uh, fine line between others enjoying the park and, and hanging out doing things that aren't.
One, one last thing, if I could mention, City Manager, uh, you know, that same individual actually mentioned having a focus of, you know, like a take-back-the-park initiative. Where, you know, it's them at least trying to somehow own their own community and own their own park and, and, um, having a focus of, ultimately, they're the ones. And I, I've mentioned it to them, it's like, your presence at that park is really important. Cause the more families and more people take up that space, then, then the less comfortable these folks feel about, about doing what they do. And, and if they're enjoying the park, again, it's not as big of a deal. But so, so all things considered, I think there's a lot of energy focused on this, uh, and again, I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chair, um, Billy, thank you very much for being here. We, we really do appreciate it. Um, you know, two, two points. One is, I hope that the city will, will come with more money to the table. Because I think we can work together on a lot of good ideas. And the other one is the, the McCarthy Park, when you have success, there's bounty becomes secondary issues. And one of them is that we might have a transformation or, or a migration of, uh, members of the homeless community going into the McCarthy Park. And so I'm really walking into that neighborhood, talking to the homeowners that, you know, look, the City Hollister is working to make sure that this park is yours. And the city and the homeowners around there should work together to take that park, take it as a ownership, such as what Supervisor Hernandez has said. And a lot of those, uh, family members, they're, they're happy that they, they're going to participate, but there is that constant, uh, uh, concern. That such a beautiful park will have a tendency to bring that part of the community that either sprays the walls or, or people are doing illegal, illegal activities. So I keep telling these homeowners, but we need to take ownership of this park. Think of it as your own home. And that's the only way we can do it. The city can provide so much. The cops can be here twenty-four, seven. We need to help out, uh, on this park. So two things, one is that let's, let's, let's make sure we work together on bringing more funding for homeless. And two, you know, I want to thank the city council for building and creating that McCarthy Park.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. You're excused.
Oh, thank you.
You know, rest of the week. Any public comment? We'll bring it back to the board. This was an informational only. We'll move on to forty-nine. Chair to appoint a board member to the Mobility Partnership Committee. After, uh, long discussions with myself, um, I will appoint myself to the, uh, Mobility Partnership Committee. And all on paper?
You need a motion or?
You need, need a motion, correct?
I'll move.
It'll be good, yeah, it'll be good.
I'll move that we appoint, uh, Chairman Mark Medina to the Mobility Committee.
Second. On paper?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero?
Mr. Chairman, I may as well, just real quick, one of the reasons why we have it, have it on this meeting was because there, there's a meeting tomorrow at nine-thirty in Gauri, Gauri City.
Oh.
Yeah, and, and we have a conference call at two o'clock.
Takes us to, uh, number fifty. Receive an update from the Resource Management Agency on Public Works Division Federal Aid Highway Bridge Program.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, yeah, you know, um, both Edgar and I have been playing RMA Director, interim RMA Director. And one of the things that your board did mission is, is to bring roads and bridges as, as much as we can to the board. So this is one item that we've been discussing internally, uh, is to give you an update on our bridges. And, and, you know, this is such a, a high-profile, um, item with the Caltrans and Ambag, they've been helping us. Um, I wanted to make sure that your board was updated on, on where we're at. We're doing fairly well, but I just felt it was appropriate to make sure we, we have this in a public session. So I'd like to invite, I believe, Noel Soan, yeah?
Prior, prior to your, uh, presentation, I just want to make sure, and correct me if I'm wrong. Ambag plays a large role in helping us move forward with these programs. They've been instrumental in helping us keep funding and receive funding. Is that correct?
Yeah, they, they have. We actually, um, have been in contract with them to help us with our accounting in the RMA office. As well as, uh, helping facilitate with Caltrans, uh, on the Ambag side of things. Cause, uh, Maura, she's the Director. Maura, she's the Director of Ambag. She's um been uh, she used to work with Caltrans and and knows the, you know, intimate relations and kind of behind scenes things with Caltrans. So she's been helping us and meeting with us regularly, our staff. And it's been very helpful to have her on board, uh, being able to communicate with them as well as, um, you know, we have NV five as well that's been helping us with the bridges. So I'd like to have you guys get an update.
Sorry about that. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Noel Swan, and uh again, with NV five uh project team on this uh on this project. And the purpose uh today is uh to provide you a schedule, update of the county's bridge projects that are part of the federal aid highway bridge program. We're part of that staff augmentation uh for professional engineering services under our RMA. And my task, uh, well, myself and the project manager, Jack Walker, who unfortunately cannot be here today, and uh Greg Buckmill, we're all a team together to to help assist the the county with with the uh the bridge and roadway projects. Uh, my task myself specifically is to um help out on the county bridge projects. And the objective is to assist with the required uh funding processing as well as making recommendations to staff and RMA management to move and deliver the projects uh to construction. The highway bridge program scopes that's relevant to uh the county are are rehabilitation and replacements of deficient bridges. Uh, there's one project that's a low-water crossing project to replace a low-water uh crossing, which is no longer part of the current program now. But that's that's an existing existing project with with the county. And there's one scour countermeasure project as well. So that's uh, those are the scopes of the uh projects that's relevant to the county's projects. We started back in two thousand seventeen in November, and uh at that time, we uh identified the ten total projects that the county had. And now nine were active as far as being authorized by uh by Caltrans to proceed with the projects. And uh unfor- unfortunately, nine of those projects has has stalled. Uh, and that's that's the reason we were there to help it along. And then there's one that needed to be activated, which means it was in the the bridge program, but it hasn't been officially authorized to proceed. So it was still in the gates. Um, as of today, um, if I can refer you to the attachment on the uh on your on the board package, um, there's a PDF file that came with it. But uh those, the pro- the uh the the uh, the information there provides the the current uh status of uh all the the projects right now. The, right now, there's uh eight projects. Um, and if you can uh refer to the to the uh, the table there, it provides the uh the the name and the location of the project, uh the status uh of the projects in regards to the phase of the project where it's at. Uh, construction, right away, or or uh still in the preliminary engineering phase. Um, there's uh the target construction date for those particular projects when they are anticipated to be advertised for construction. Um, and then when construction is anticipated to start for those. Uh, the program costs as also indicated are shown on on the table, uh, the uh estimated construction costs uh as well as the uh total program cost within the program. So uh currently, in summary, there's there's eight projects. The first seven projects that you see there uh on the table, on the list, um, have all restarted uh and are uh proceeding forward. So um, and they also have received the environmental clearance to proceed for the next ma- major phase, which is significant so that they can get to the uh construction phase. The the first project, which is the Shore Road uh and San Felipe Road Bridge, is uh it's a bridge, it's a barrier rail replacement project. It is currently being advertised right now for construction. And uh it's anticipated to uh award in August and then begin construction in 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 September. So that'll be, it'll be completed by the end of the year. And Caltrans have authorized for the county to proceed with that project and receive the uh federal funding for for to go ahead with that project. The second project is the Hospital Road Bridge Project, and that's the one over the San Benito um River uh Bridge. That's west uh, the limits is west of South Side Road and just east of San Diego. Uh, that one is actually, we are targeting to proceed, uh, targeting to uh advertise by by October of this year. We are working with Caltrans and closely to um have the uh uh construction to 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 get authorized for construction. Right now, it's currently in the right-of-way phase, meaning uh all the right-of-ways has been acquired as as in regards to the uh property. Uh, the only thing that's uh we are doing right now to get the right-of-way certification before we go to construction is to um get the PG&E. Uh, there's a PG&E overhead line that needs to be relocated, which is which conflicts within the project. So we we have to, uh, we are going through the submittal phase and to get that approved within with the uh right-of-way application, uh certification application to Caltrans. So that's in progress as we speak. And we anticipate that's that's on schedule to to uh get through. Um, the uh, the consultant has already provided the a hundred percent uh plan specs and estimates. This is for the contract uh, uh, contract uh, uh, package. And we and they're on schedule to to deliver their project or deliver their uh PSNE by July. So uh, timing, timing could be right where we can put all this package together, get uh Caltrans approval to proceed with construction and by, hopefully by August. And so then we can get the the process through for to advertise for construction then. The construction has to be uh, uh, the um, application or the request for authorization to construct has still has to be approved by Caltrans and have to provide the all the paperwork that's required for that. So that's, there's still quite a bit of work in regards to that prior to all all that is to happen.
Can I interrupt you for one second on the Union Road Bridge, um, with the chair's permission?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Um, is, are we constructing a brand-new bridge? And that brand new bridge will be open and serviceable prior to the demolition of the old bridge? Or is it an expansion retrofit project? And I'm concerned about traffic getting in in and out of our community. That's one of the major pathways nowadays.
Um, Union Road Bridge is actually, yes, that uh, the uh the uh intent of that bridge is, yes, is to construct a a new bridge, not on the same alignment, but a different alignment, which is downstream from the the existing bridge. And and the uh, the traffic will 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 have to be controlled and going through that particular site while the bridge is being built. So there there is uh plans for traffic control and diverting traffic around the the area during construction.
Essentially, we'll be able to use the existing bridge until the new bridge is finished. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So Union Road, uh, Union Road is proceeding. Uh, the consultant is uh, has restarted that project as well. And uh, we anticipate uh, construction there to be in twenty twenty-one, something like that, twenty twenty-one, April, May, twenty twenty-one, um, July, August. Uh, approximate construction time. Uh, there's, again, the environmental has been done. Has been, so the the project has been stalled, but we are getting the consultants uh progressing with that project. And there's two two or three parcels left to be acquired in regards to right-of-way. And there there is still some utility relocation that needs to be done. There's some updates to the uh PSNE because it's been stalled. The the, there are some uh uh, updates to the standards that the the uh PSNE that needs to be uh updated on. So there's there's quite a bit of work left on there, but the the project is proceeding. The rest uh are pretty much the same. They're all uh proceeding. Anzar Road, uh, Lion Kiln Road Project, Rosenveranda, Rocks Road Bridge Project. So all seven of them are proceeding accordingly, and we are monitoring them. Um, and uh uh, the la- last project, which is the Penoch Bridge, uh, that one has uh is still under the environmental stage, and there were some concerns in regards to the uh design elements for that particular project, uh, that the Resource Agency was not, had some concerns with. And we are working on that to get that resolved, but we we will need to contact Caltrans Environmental to make sure that we are coming up with the right solution to proceed with that project. So that one is still in the environmental stage. The uh, the last project is the Penoch Bridge Project, which is, it's still, it's on Penoch Bridge, but it's a different structure. It's about uh, the previous Penoch Bridge was about twelve, twelve miles away from uh SR one uh State Route twenty-five or State Route twenty-five. This particular bridge is about six miles from from there, east of uh State Route twenty-five. Uh, this particular project is a scour countermeasure project, and we just have applied uh the application for to proceed with this uh uh project. And that's that one uh particular project I was talking about, um, that were, that was still in the gates, that hasn't been started. And that was that was, um, the project was actually approved. Believe the application for that project was back in, I believe, in two thousand I believe in two thousand, two thousand ten, I believe. But anyway, that project, we are, uh, Caltrans has that application and they uh preliminary to have a appro- uh approved the content of the application, and we intend to get approval within about a month or so to actually start that particular project. So in in summary, um, out of out of uh eight uh uh active projects, seven are proceeding accordingly. And uh, we're we're hoping to get uh one project, uh, two, actually, two projects out to construction. One project in in regards to the Shore Road being constructed this this year. And then Hospital Road will be advertised by October. So those are 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 major milestones right now.
Thank you. Questions? Oh, I I just have a comment. I don't know. Well. Go ahead, Mr. Patel. I just, I'm I'm happy this is a- actually back on track. Uh, this has come before the board for the last fifteen years, twenty years. Uh, and it, and it's, I I I feel it's been one of the greatest failures of of that I've been a part of, um, being a supervisor, uh, is this bridge list and the and and where we're at. A lot of these projects are at PE, preliminary engineering, including environmental, and and it's been that long. It's been that long. Um, I'm not blaming our current staff. I I'm actually thanking them for getting it back on track. And uh, looks like we have some firm dates, but doggone it, um, I hope the county isn't responsible for the additional costs uh to put these bridges. It's still federally funded, no matter, you know, when we start. So it's, I I, but the only thing that could go wrong is if we don't do the project. And uh, and that's kind of frustrating because there's a couple of bridges that I wish weren't even on the list. And we saved a lot of money, federal money, uh, not doing them. But um, I I just needed to vent a little bit. And um, I hope you understand that we we should be getting more periodic reports as far as the progress on these on these bridges. You know, Hospital Road needs to get done. Um, yeah, and Union Road needs to get done. And so um, keep going forward. And and I would request to the chair and the administrative staff that we should have a report at least every six months as far as the progress and keep on this timeline.
Planning to bring it back sooner than that, but you know, just quarterly at least. Mr. Chair, if I may add a couple of things. There, we we actually did infuse more money into this because of our tardiness. So um, I know we brought this back a bit ago. So there was more money. Uh, but the importance of getting these done could be uh millions and millions of dollars that we would have to um go ahead and give back to Caltrans on these. So we we don't want to do that. We want to make sure these things, you know, the uh, the bridges move forward. Additionally, I wanted to highlight that Ambag is working diligently with Caltrans to help get a a project management team from Caltrans in to help us with this really important uh staff, myself. We've been uh working with them to, we've been, keep more prodding them to to keep that moving forward, and hopefully we can get some help. That'll help us since, you know, we're really low on staff in RMA right now. So it'll be a big help. I just want to get the board an update with that, and thank you for coming down. Really appreciate your time.
Right, thank you. Thank you. Twelve oh three, going into uh number fifty-one, which is the County Administration Office. Um, receive a presentation for the nineteen twenty recommended budget.
Yeah, we should be able to get that done at half hour.
We're taking lunch at twelve thirty, and we'll be doing a working lunch while we're doing closed session.
That's fair.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to open up, if I may, Mr. Mr. Chair, um, just briefly, every year, um, since I've been on board, we've had a kind of a mock hearing. We're doing it a little bit differently. We're not going to go through the entire budget like we have done in the past. We've really uh spent a lot of time with the board on this this year, and um I think the board's well aware of where we're at, as well as the department heads. But we wanted to at least give an update. So Stuart's um worked hard on this, and he has a PowerPoint presentation that'll give the highlights of the budget uh to be heard on the twenty-fourth. So, Mr. Stewart.
Good afternoon, Board. Um, so uh, the, like Ray said, this is just a highlight of uh kind of an overview of where we're at. Um, I wanted to give an update on the last bit of the budget timeline that is left. Um, the recommended budget will be posted online um by Friday, the fourteenth. We're uh, we're finalizing, we're fine-tuning some last-minute things, um, not with actual budget numbers, but uh just compiling the budget document together. Um, the budget hearings will begin at nine AM on June twenty-fourth, and they will continue um until we get the budget completed. Um, so uh, last year, I I believe it went into um the board meeting on the twenty-fifth. Depending on how lo- how much uh items we actually uh really get into at that time.
Actually, just as a, um, we actually um worked on it for behalf of a day, but there were some cleanup items that we had to to address. We, so we had to clean that up the next day.
CSAs.
Yeah, CSA.
Um, some of the changes to this year's uh format, um, during the budget hearings, um, we're not going to be changing the recommended budget. We're just going to accept all of the changes from the board, and I will be compiling that as a re- a separate report. Um, we will be posting that online after the um, after the board um makes their changes, uh, if any. Um, or if any changes come uh outside of that. Um, and then the uh, during the Septem- uh by September twenty-fourth, I will be working with Auditor's Office, compile compiling the final budget as adopted by the board. Um, and I will be bringing that back to the board for that final adoption. This will be um the final packaged budget um that we will be submitting to the State Controller's Office with all of the um schedules one through fifteen in the format from the state. Um, we're doing this as a change from previous years to kind of uh help with the efficiency between the offices and not creating so many versions of the same budget. Um, so that we can uh have the final submission to the to the state in a quicker manner. Um, so I ju- I just wanted to go over some of the key focus points that um were considered um going into fiscal year nineteen twenty. Uh, this is going to be kind of a transition year for the county in terms of there's so many economic opportunities coming through. Um, so economic development was one of the focus points. Um, additionally, there are so many uh road and infrastructure needs, so we um going into compiling this budget together. So we, um, going into compiling this budget together, we considered the road and the capital improvement needs of the county. Um, additionally, we know that staffing and employee retention is a, a very big concern for our county. Um, and we considered those during the budget process. Uh, so at the last meeting, um, with the department requested, we had, um, a fund balance, uh, potential usage of closer to eighteen million dollars. Um, this has kind of been dwindled down to approximately fifteen point three million. Um, this is pretty consistent with prior years. Last year, um, we had adopted a six point seven million fund balance, uh, usage to balance the budget. In, in years past, we have adopted a use of fund balance, but this hasn't actually occurred. Um, both in, uh, sorry, I skipped a few slides. Both in sixteen seventeen and seventeen eighteen, we had adopted a, uh, a budget with a four million dollar usage and then a twelve and a half million dollar usage of fund balance. But the, in reality, we were able to return one point five million back, um, into the general fund. This is a combination of vacancies, not having enough staff for the services and supplies or to complete certain types of projects. Um, also some one-time monies came through during these, uh, during these through, two, uh, budget years. Um, going back, I just wanted to highlight, um, the changes in general fund expenditures, um, from the previous ye- years. Through fourteen fifteen up to seventeen eighteen, those are the actual figures and those are the requested and adopted for the current year. Um, this is kind of the change. There's multiple things kind of at play here. Um, salary and benefits have increased approximately one point two million from the previous year. We've increased pension costs, the fire contract, um, some legal costs, uh, class and comp study, which is a one-time cost, but it will, it's directly addressing our staffing and retention needs. Um, there is a roads contribution from the general fund, um, five hundred thousand, aid to indigents. And then, uh, capital contribution, uh, from the general fund, um, is proposed to be increased from the previous year. Uh, currently, I just wanted to give an update of where we sat at, at the end of seventeen eighteen. Um, this was our fund balances. Um, one of the items that will be brought back to the board is the Monterey Bay Community Power JPA. Um, that funding, I believe, has been released to come back into our general fund, um, as, uh, either available or assigned per the board's actions. Um, but that funding no longer needs to be restricted for that specifically. Um, so we will be bringing that back to the board for a decision on that at some point. Um, but I did just want to give a highlight of where we stand with our reserve balance, knowing that, um, we may have some usage of fund balance in the current year for all the capital, one-time costs, road infrastructure and the priorities that the board has, um, kind of discussed with administrative staff. Additionally, I wanted to highlight, um, the total budget for the county. Um, the CAO's recommended is on the right column. Last year's adopted is on the left col- in the middle column. Um, the big discrepancy there, why it's changed by, uh, a significant amount is, one, the road fund. Um, previously, we had budgeted the road fund for all potential projects that need to be addressed in the county. We have, uh, uh, with the help of RMA, um, staff, they have focused in on what is actually going to be accomplished within fiscal year nineteen twenty. Um, so that's why it's down sixty million, um, because we don't actually spend sixty-six million because we don't actually have any, that kind of funding for those projects. Um, additionally, the capital improvement fund, um, is lower than the, the previous year. Um, main items there is the jail project is going to, is almost completed. Um, there, that's going to be finalized within nineteen twenty, but, um, last year we had budgeted over twenty-seven million dollars for it. Um, and then additionally, the NG project is going to be finalized within fiscal year nineteen and that was another eight million dollar project that was on the list, um, in the last year. So I wanted to present to the board, um, a couple of other items. This is the, uh, recommended FTE, um, positions, um, to increase the board. I did want to highlight one thing on there specifically. Um, getting back to some questions that the board actually had on this, um, to me specifically, the building and maintenance worker position for RMA, that is actually to staff, um, additional facility services that are needed within the county. We have added over fifty thousand square feet in the county from environmental, uh, the public health, homeless shelter, the jail. Um, all of these facilities are maintained by our, uh, our internal staff. Um, so this, that's why I wanted to clarify that position. Um, but again, uh, for this year, we, we, these positions, um, we know that the board wanted to address RMA staffing levels as well as we needed to address some state mandate, um, issues that we're having, um, from the DA's office, probation and corrections. Um, and, and we have cut this list down from the department request. It was about twenty-one staff, um, to really the critical staffing that we need, um, to get us through this next year. Are there any questions from the board on, uh, the staffing?
But comment, I could, I could say that, uh, after attending most of the budget, um, meetings with you with department heads, that this is a very conservative list. It's not a, um, you know, if everything was amazing and, you know, this is the actual staff, we need to be even more effective and efficient. This is really a, a, a bare bones list to, um, just kind of keep, keep moving and adding some folks back in. So I appreciate all the department heads that are here today actually digging deep and looking into, um, what, what you can do to work with what you have, so to speak, and coming up with a very conservative list, so thank you for that.
Um, I did want to, I just remember, I did want to highlight one other, um, that might kind of be confusing on this list. It hopefully won't be confusing on the budget book. Um, the, uh, HSA has requested, or Public Health specifically, to bump up the Public Health Officer from a point nine position to a full-time staff member. That's why it's requested at a point one increase. Um, I just wanted to make sure everybody's aware and clarify that position specifically.
So, Mr. Chair, these are new positions that are going to be added to, to our current, uh, s- schedule of.
Correct.
Okay. And, and this is, and this takes into account, this reflects on the budget that the staff is going to make a recommendation, right? It's a, so you have a zero, well, there's no such thing as zero balanced budget, but through the use of reserves, you'll be able to balance the budget.
Correct.
And then, I know that they were doing a comp study and that's going to have some, some monetary, um, um, activity, you know, shorter words. Uh, have you accounted for that in your budget process?
Um, not the class and comp study because we don't know exactly what that is going to actually be. Um, and that's more of a, a personnel, uh, issue. But, um, we're hoping that, um, you know, a- after this year, we're hoping that some more revenues will start coming in from some of the projects that your board has been working on and that we can more adequately address those in the future.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I just, I had a question. Um, so Stuart, does this mean, uh, I mean, basically, we're touching reserves? So down the road, I mean, is, is our goal to, to try to protect the reserves? I mean, going forward, you know, with all, with the intended projects that we're talking about? Um, I mean, is there, is there a policy that could be written that could kind of help make sure that we keep reserves at a certain level? Um, or is there already a policy in place?
Yeah, so, um, going into the, into the next coming year, and then this is going to be my, um, my next six-month project to bring to the board, is a formal reserve policy. Um, again, when, when we went out to Standard and Poor's and did the credit rating, that was a big thing that was brought up. Um, and we, we want to establish that and bring something to the board. That's a complete package that'll include things like the disaster recovery reserve that have already been assigned by the board and the, and the pension reserve and some, uh, just even a, a general reserve for just general usage for a downturn recession. Um, so I will be bringing an item back to the board to review to determine what kind of level, um, that should be, be at. Um, additionally, in this coming year, we're, I'm going to be really focused on reviewing this budget, our operations, trying to determine, um, if we're being too conservative in a sense on our expenditures because obviously I showed you in two years, we had a four million budget usage, a twelve million budget adopted usage, and then we returned one and a half million, both years. So we, we are going to focus on really determining, um, if, if these estimates are too conservative and if we should be kind of changing the way that we present the budget. Um, but this is where we're at in the current.
Yeah, and.
Go ahead.
Sure, yeah, I, I mean, I, I, and I, I totally support that. I mean, I know that part of the goal is, is, you know, uh, succession planning, retention, you know, and that makes total sense, right? You, you need to have a certain level of staffing to do your work and do it, do it expediently. So I, I completely agree, uh, you know, and kind of piggybacking on what you mentioned, you know, with, with the Standard and Poor's, the credit rating. I, you know, I imagine part of the conversation was you, you got to make, keep a level of reserves to a certain extent to protect that credit rating and so there's got to be that, that, that balance where, you know, as you're mentioning, we're making decisions to move the county forward, but we're also not making, um, you know, too, too, basically spending too much money with the fo- that, with that money that we're, we're, we're not getting ourselves in a position where our reserves are, are a little bit on the dangerous level or, or, you know, because it could easily take, sway to the other direction. So, so that policy, it makes sense. I appreciate you mentioning that. Definitely where I was going with this.
And additionally, there, you know, there's, there's things in there like the contingency for a million dollars that's in there as a use of fund balance if it's needed. Um, you know, hopefully that's not needed in the current year. Um, and then there is a lot of, um, uh, you know, two million dollars was set aside for the capital project at the courthouse. Um, we've never actually spent that money, so if we actually spend it in this year, that would be a use of fund balance. So it's really a lot of these one-time items that are kind of coming to a head at this year. And additionally, we have some, you know, increased expenses like the pension and, and the fire contract that are coming in this fiscal year nineteen twenty. So we are going to monitor it and we're hopefully, we're going to try to address that in the coming years, either by bringing to the board additional, um, potential revenue sources or, or where we can cut. Um, but we know that this is a critical year for a lot of things with the roads and everything else that's going on.
Thank you, Stuart.
Mr. Chair, if I may add one thing, um, you know, with, um, you know, when we budget, we budget for some of the unknowns that may happen. We had, uh, Lever's Lane, the flooding out there. We had Southside Road, the slide. And those, in order to take care of those things, we had to use our, you know, our contingencies or, or the money that we set aside for emergency purposes. We do, um, and have reached out to FEMA. We're in the process of, of receiving some of that money back. We're also looking at addressing Southside Road as well to get refunded, uh, those funds. So, you know, that would replenish that. But just as an example, when we're budgeting, we have to budget for sometimes those unknowns that may come, come up. Um, the other thing is, is that we want to give the department heads the opportunity to, to hire staff. Um, it's been a difficult time across the nation. It's not something that's just unique to, um, to San Bonito County. I think we're probably hit a little bit harder because we're li- we live so close to, or we're so close to, um, uh, Santa Clara County that, that, uh, you know, they pay their employees, uh, uh, really high wages. So we're competing with, um, probably one extreme to the other from a salary perspective. Um, and, but we do want to give the, um, department heads the opportunity and that's why we've kind of implemented this vacancy budgeting where we're kind of off. But it gives them the opportunity to try to hire and recruit, but also gives, um, we, you know, we have to still move forward with the budget too. So this is just kind of a mechanism and a tool. But we're looking at fine tuning that. I know I've had many discussions with Stuart on even fine tuning how we can, w- we budget. You know, in the past, we budgeted employees, these, these, these full-time employees fully packaged because we don't know what they're going to come in as. So we're going to look at, you know, look, looking at more, uh, a little closer with, um, data to what, what is the average? You know, if, if it's just an employee, a single employee, and look at that average number and then address that in our future budgets to actually get a little bit more detailed and a little more accurate in what regards to, um, what we budget for an unknown as an example. So there's a lot of work that we still need to do and, and fine tune, um, but this just, um, you know, we have to kind of, and then historically, we've been in the black and we've been, we've been doing okay. This year is obviously like, um, Stuart had mentioned, where, you know, there's a lot of, a lot more going out and then we had to pay a little bit more with, you know, these disasters and so. But, you know, I think there's also some things on the other side of, of it as well that we have some, um, projects that we're working on to, um, bring in more revenue. Economic development's really important. We've been trying hard staff-wise to, to do that. But, you know, those things take time. They, they, this doesn't happen overnight and, um, but I think on the horizon, we have some more revenue potentially coming through. Um, yeah, so that's, yeah, I think, you know, I, I think from a snapshot or a high-level point of view, it kind of, you know, I think helps a little bit to clarify that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I've got a real quick question. I mean, I'm going to have lots of, tons of questions later on, so I don't want to go into a ton, a ton of question mode right now, but I just got a simple one. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, we approved, uh, leasing vehicles for the pr- probation department earlier and I'm looking at this schedule list of assets for twenty, nineteen twenty and there's actually four vehicles under the probation department too. Is that a total of seven vehicles?
I can clarify that for you. Um, so the three, three of those four vehicles are for that lease contract. Um, I don't know if they're even going to be able to hot, purchase the leased vehicles before the end of the, uh, before the end of the year. We have a hi- we have a purchasing freeze right now. Until the, until.
Well, the money's going to carry over.
Yeah, yeah, so. And then, um, uh, there, uh, they did propose one, um, caged vehicle, which is a specialty police vehicle that can't be purchased as I understand through the lease program. Um, or it's, there's some more nuances with that. Um, and that is a proposal to replace a different caged vehicle. Um, that's what I understand from the probation office.
And, and that, and that's the issue is that we, we put, we, we have a high budget because we put all the CIPs in the budget and yet we're not going to do them.
And, and that, that's happened plenty of times. There's been, uh, I'll give you an example, the sheriff's office, they, they had a car budgeted, but, uh, they didn't end up spending it. We're rolling it back over into this year, but it was budgeted in last year. So, um, yeah, we, we're very conservative, um, a- and we try to give flexibility to the departments, but.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
One other thing I just like a lot in closing for us or for me is the, the risk part of it. I think it's really important that, um, you know, we, we need to, this is a, there's a lot of employees here that we're adding and I know Stuart's had some heartburn, probably not sleeping a few, a few nights there. And, um, you know, it's been difficult, but I think we're at the point now where we do need to hire. It's getting to that point where things are slipping through the cracks. Um, I know in the Auditor's Office, there's been some, uh, you know, issues with journal entries and posting and, and those types of things that we just need to get a better handle on some of those things. And, um, it's, it's, it's within every single department that we're confronted with. An additional work, I mean, it's different from when I started in government. And, you know, it's just, things are so much faster, there's, things are moving, there's just so much going on and we just don't have as many staff as, as, as we did or as historically government has had before. So, um, with that, I think that there's a level of risk and I think it's, it's, you can look at the risk from the other point of view, but I think if us not bringing forward these positions, um, there could be a, a risk of not getting the work done and having issues with the courts, um, and so many other facets. So it's, I think it's pretty important.
And, uh, I did just want to provide the, the board and the public with the fixed. And, uh, I did just wanna provide the, the board and the public with the fixed asset schedule, 'cause that was finalized. Some highlights there would be the Hall of Records project, we've put that back on. There's some public safety infrastructure projects still, would like the jail. Particularly the old portion of the jail, 'cause we have a brand-new expansion, um, but there was some requests there that we have included. Obviously, we can take a look at that further if the board wishes to, um, uh, change anything. And then, uh, some other things that we, we have talked about internally, uh, the Parks Master Plan update, uh, doing a, an actual five-year CIP project. So that we can actually get a document together, so the board has a, a vision of how they wanna approach our, our infrastructure, 'cause we know there are requests coming out from all the departments. But we really need to have a plan together on how we're gonna approach that with our limited funding, so, um, some of those things I just wanted to highlight, um, that we've included in this budget.
A- as well as, um, the strategic plan that we worked on, so a lot of what you see here, there's a lot of ties from our meeting in February. While it's in draft format, Dulce and staff, uh, within our county have been working diligently on that to get the final product, but with, with that, you know, um, we've taken elements out of that and, and put it in this, um, budget.
Oh, uh, sorry, I had one other thing. Regarding, um, the regular agenda for the budget hearing, um, these are the id- these are the departments that staff has internally identified and, uh, we've had, had some discussion with the board. These are the ones that we feel that we need to have a open discussion with the board to make decisions specifically on those budgets. Are there any other, uh, we kind of wanted to get some feedback from the board, obviously, you could, the public or the board can pull anything at any time during the budget hearing. But I just wanted to, uh, talk to the board, see if there were any other specific budget units that you wanted to review during the budget hearing specifically.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with those, uh, recommended.
I'm okay, but I might have some other ones, yeah.
We'll pull something out, but this would be the, the meat of it.
Yep.
Yep. Any, uh, public comment? See none, bring it back to the board and, informational?
Yeah, it was informational, thank you, Stuart, and thank department heads and staff for all their work, uh, been a lot of work lately, thanks.
Well, this, uh, adjourns the open session, we're, we'll head to closed session, can, Barbara, can you give us a, uh, breakdown?
Yes, um, number fifty-two, closed session, conference of legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to subjects D two and E two of Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine. Number of cases, two, uh, facts and circumstances justifying closed session, potential litigation relating to a letter received January twenty-second. Requesting the county enforces zoning contract between county and Ridge Mark Corporation, and second, potential litigation relating to the current landfill agreement. Fifty-three, it's, um, closed session pursuant to Government Code Section, uh, five four nine five seven, public employee discipline dismissal and release. Fifty-four, closed session, conference of legal counsel, existing litigation, number of cases, two subdivisions A and D one of five four nine five six point nine. Number of cases, I mean, name of case, BMC Promise Way LLC versus, uh, County of San Benito, City of Hollister, Sixth Appellate District Court of Appeals. Case number H zero four seven, four six seven oh seven, and Rose, um, versus Ca- uh, County of San Benito Superior Court of California, County of San Benito, CU seventeen dash zero zero one five one. And also real property negotiations, um, which would be, and I do wanna add additional one, after we read this in, I'd like to have the board consider adding additional one to the agenda. It's real property, uh, zero Buena Vista Road, APN zero one nine two three zero 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 two on Buena Vista Road. And it is agency negotiators, Ray Espinoza and Barbara Thompson, Granite Rock, and under terms and negotiation price and terms of payment, and also the property street address at Penoch Valley Road. Acquiring formal grants of easement for the existing roadway from Paul Wallace, um, same agency negotiators, negotiating Paul, parties of Paul Wallace and Paul Rebela, under negotiation price and terms of payment. Lastly, there was additional, um, uh, closed session that could be added, that came to the attention of the agency yesterday, and it cannot reasonably wait till the next agenda. And that would be adding an additional closed session under five four nine five six point nine, D two and E one, if the board would make that motion, um, to add that onto the agenda.
Second, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Right, five, zero? Any public comment? See none, we'll head to the back.